Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norton Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, May 14th. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:15. I guess we'll start with, we have a few minutes. We'll start with the, do we have any bills and warrants for tonight?
We do not have any bills for tonight.
All right. Did everyone get a chance to look at the minutes? The April 30th minutes. All right. If there aren't any corrections or adjustments, entertain a motion to approve.
Some corrections.
Okay.
On the second page, dealing with the Nexon application, I believe you also, you also mentioned missing a butters listed. And then the second thing, the question that was asked the town council, I think, was to ask to be advised whether Chapter 41, 81p language shall forthwith approve, precluded the application of town's approved rules and regulations as to what is required and the plan, in the plan, and the requirements for submission are the same. The other things, in the votes on the bottom of the page, I don't see anything for Joe. And I think for Scott, you have him as saying yes and abstain.
Scott abstained on the second.
You might have. Sorry, there was an early draft. I corrected that. My apologies, that was on the Dropbox, but we corrected that. We added Joe to a yes, and Scott was on the abstain for all.
The blue votes?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Bill, last thing, I wasn't sure how we ended this on the seminary way. I thought we talked about there was going to be up to three rooms, and I thought with a pre-inspection prior to each new one.
Yeah, I.
Isn't it number four?
We should not have put the minutes up. My apologies. Yes, we, if you look at the one in your packet, we included all of the conditions in there. So, yes, you're correct.
Okay.
Up to three rooms, and they had to reg, she had to register with the state.
Yeah. Number four in the packet is the applicant must saw the building commission to conduct a pre-inspection prior to occupancy of any unit that becomes available.
Yeah.
As a short-term rental.
Oh, okay.
And I don't know that this is a correction to the minutes or a memory refresher, but toward the end, Planning Board Business and Policy, bringing in these motions to update the planning handbook, I don't know that I was looking to have that planning book, a planning handbook updated. I thought we were talking about whether, to seek council's advice as to the, I don't want to say the enforceability, but the applicability of the handbook.
Okay.
I wasn't, I don't recall making any motion to update the handbook. I think we wanted clarification as to.
Yeah, I know we discussed updating, or we discussed reviewing and updating it, but not, yeah, I don't think it was a motion.
We may have motions separately, but I do think you had the larger point there.
Yeah, it took, yeah. Okay. Is that on the email that we?
Bob, yes.
Was that on that part, or was that a different, I'm thinking of a different one.
There's a motion in here, there's on this, this second one, there's a motion to approve. No, that was something else, he didn't, he didn't do that. But I think there was an ongoing request to have council make a determination for us as to whether we can apply the handbook.
What supersedes what?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was the last one.
He took that out. In the handout, you had a motion to seek guidance from council regarding the issue of conflicting regulations between the Planning Board Handbook and the bylaws, and had it perceived in future. Julie seconded it, and we all passed it. If that didn't.
Yeah, I, I, right, we're going to put that back in. I was looking at my notes, I had something different, but Nicole had that correct, so we'll put that back.
So, why don't we, why don't we hold off on voting on these until those corrections are in? And, or, for yours, if you could, if you want to send over the wording.
Okay.
All right. We're going to open up the public hearing for the upcoming town meeting warrant. The first item is the digital electronic billboards by special permit in the industrial zoning districts.
And Mike's here.
Okay. Okay, we have Mike Units here.
Thank you. We submitted this article previously in 2015, I believe it was. And so, we bring it back, and as you look at that tonight, we did see, we would like to reduce the distance from the highway to 500 feet, as you did previously. And this is an opportunity that we're looking at. If a developer comes in to put a sign in, we do have one agreement, potential mitigation agreement right now, that we would receive $300,000 per a sign to the town that go in. And as you can see from the suggested bylaw, you can't, under state law, the signs can't be closer than 1,000 feet to each other, so we do have a limited area, and I don't see that you would be able to get more than three signs in that area. I do have two people here tonight, I know, not, they're not here to talk about any specifics about their proposal, but at least they could give you some information on digital signs and how they're regulated, and how far the light emanates from those signs, if you would allow that.
Absolutely.
John Carroll from Carroll Advertising.
Thank you. This is Bob Messier from Daktronics, John Carroll from Carroll Advertising. We did, we were involved that last go-round. We were able to hear the feedback from the, from the closest of butters. I think the biggest concern was, you know, how is this going to be, you know, lighting up the sky? And so, we weren't really able to address the light impact at the time, and the, the meeting was very, very quick. So, we really weren't prepared last time around, truth be told. We've since done a comprehensive light analysis with Daktronics. They do this stuff all the time. I will turn, turn it over to Bob Messier, who's the expert at this, but we were pleasantly, pleasantly surprised at how minimum of an impact the light would be. And Bob will speak to that.
If I, if I can hand out some of these, these.
This kind of just shows you.
It's a larger version than what we already have.
You guys have a smaller version of that.
I do, I haven't seen this.
I do have plenty of these.
Again, I haven't seen that one, so.
I'm assuming it's the same.
Yeah.
So, if you look, if you look closely down at the center of that circle, that would be basically the two billboard faces facing the interstate highway. What that circle represents is, at different viewing angles and different distances, it shows what a point, a foot candle reading would be at the maximum or the absolute worst conditions, meaning it's the middle of the nighttime, the display is automatically dims down to a level where it should be at nighttime. So, what it's showing is basically, let me get my glasses. So, as you can see, the center, at zero degrees, at 750 feet, it's at .03 foot candles. That would be the amount of light that it's, that a surface would be hitting from the light from it. And then, as you go out to 75 degrees, you can see it's pretty much nothing, you wouldn't see any light from it. Now, .03 foot candles, that is very, very, very minimal light. Foot candles is basically a measurement of how much light is striking a surface at those distances. Now, the display has a photocell where, in the bright sunny day, it's at 100% bright. Now, photocell is three-sided, so it takes three readings of the ambient light conditions outside, and as it gets darker, it automatically dims it down to about 4% of what it is at night, I mean, during the day. So, it goes down to 4% versus 100% on a bright sunny day. And it does that all automatically. So, that kind of shows you the graph of, you know, once you get off to the different angles, how that light drops down substantially. LEDs are a very focused light, they therefore straight-on viewing out to the audience on the interstate. So, that's kind of where it's targeted to. They do have louvers across the top, which we call them sunshades, which gives it a better contrast in the, during the sunny days. That prevents any light from going into the sky, so you're not going to get any halo or light into the sky from it. So, any questions on?
The board have any questions?
Could you give a perspective, just for the people who don't do this every day, kind of, what a foot candle, what a foot, .03 foot candles would represent from a layman's perspective in an everyday setting? Ballpark?
From a what perspective?
Layman's perspective, every, kind of.
Well, a foot candle, like I said, is a measurement of, of how much light is striking a surface. So, to give you an example, if we were to turn every light on here and make this room black, and I lit an everyday candle right here, and I held a piece of paper one foot away, the measurement of light striking that piece of paper is one foot candle, to give you an example. So, as you can see, at 750 feet, you're at .03 of that amount of light that you would see in the darkness of night. So, it's very minimal. You know, they automatically dim down to that 4%, so they're not too bright, they're not blinding anybody, and that happens all automatically.
So, the northern section of 495 is not receiving any, any of this light?
The northern side would be the other side?
Yeah.
Well, if you look at, at 20 degrees, it's about .02 foot candles at 750 feet away. I mean, you could see it, it's light, but it's very minimal, enough just to read it.
Do we know what the area is zoned across the 495 area? Area this is zoned?
That might.
This is all industrial.
Oh, yes, because I just want to comment, it's maybe R80.
R80?
Maybe, maybe.
We really need the zoning map, though.
Yeah.
Is it?
R80. R80. Residential 80.
And this area, this building, this block building, this, this lot?
Bodeck and Roads, Bodeck and Roads building there.
South Washington.
Yeah, it's all South Washington.
And that's industrial?
That's industrial, yes.
Could you tell me how many of these types of signs we'd see on, from Mass Pike to the end of 495 going to the Cape?
495, is that it?
495 from, from the Pike?
No, no, yeah, from the Pike to, to the end of 495.
From the Pike south?
Yeah.
One.
Do you know how many billboards are in that area? Any regular billboards?
None.
24, you get on 24 heading into Brockton, you'll start to see them.
Brockton, Bridgewater, someone 95.
Yeah.
One just went up on, right where 495 turns into 25, the Robertson's, probably within the last six months, I'd say.
Now, would this be within, at least two separate businesses, activities being conducted within 500 feet of where these signs are?
Yes.
Which would those be?
I think you'd have Plantation Products there, and then the, the Bodeck and Roads.
Okay. So, is this the only area that you're looking at? Have you examined any other areas?
Yeah, well, I've, I've got a pretty good feel for the, the roadway and the, and the possibilities, and there's another area that I believe falls under this zoning that would, there's an off-ramp that, that comes on to 123 or whatever that route is, and I believe it would be too close. So, I think this is, this, the, this, this stretch is probably the only stretch where something would be viable. And they would prob, they'd be no more, as Mike said, they'd be no more than three.
And that's just one lot, or is it several lots effect?
They're multiple lots, you have probably four lots there. And there's a lot of wetlands there, too. So, it's, it's a pretty limited area, and, and it's the 1,000-foot spacing would come into play, too. So, you might only be able to get two there.
Keep in mind, driving the site, too, that is very thick forest out there. If you drive around the site, you're familiar with the area, you get out on 495 on the other side and all along there, there's a lot of woods, there's a lot of thick forest, I mean, there's no one that will see this billboard but the people in their cars on 495.
Mr. Chairman? I attended the FinCon meeting last night, and you gave the, pretty much the same presentation, but I recall hearing that the setback minimum distance from any residential property was 1,500 feet.
Yeah.
I see it in the article reading 500 feet.
Right.
Has there been change since last night?
No, I believe it's, that's the distance in from the 495 that.
Setback.
The setback in from 495, that, that, I think that that was written as 2,000. That was, I think that was more of a.
500 from residential. Your question was, uh, distance from residential.
The minimum setback distance shall be 500 feet from any residential structure. I thought the discussion last night quoted 1,500 feet, because you mentioned.
Well, I, that, it's about 1,500 from the closest.
You mentioned five football fields as the analogy?
Yes, yes.
From any residential property?
Yes, yes.
If I could, I think the discussion was that their sign, where they were proposing it, the closest house was like 1,700 feet away, so that's where the discussion of 1,500 feet came up. One of the FinCon members brought that up, but in the proposed bylaw, it's 500 right now.
I think if you were to ask the FinCon, I think their interpretation may have been the same as mine, that the article was actually going to be 1,500 feet from any residential structure, but I'll have to go back and watch it again. That was what I had walked away from the meeting.
Did you say it's currently 1,500?
No.
Or?
What, what, the discussion was that they asked John Carroll how close the nearest house was to this sign that he's proposing, and the nearest one is 1,700. And so, one of the finance committee members made a suggestion that, well, why don't you increase it to 1,500? And someone else on the finance committee, another woman that was on the committee, said, well, that may be too great, because you may eliminate another possibility of someone else putting a sign in there. So, that, that was the discussion on it.
Was the FinCon discussing their proposal for their billboard, or was they discussing the article?
The article.
Yeah, again, I, I heard it differently. Is there any reason why this article can't be written as 1,500 feet for any residential property?
That's something that the planning board could look at.
You're, you all do have the ability to amend any of these in front of you, unlike a few weeks ago when, or a couple meetings ago, when we had the petitioners on solar, because that was provided by a petitioner, you couldn't, but here you can, on any of the ones you have before you tonight.
And just if I can, my only question on that is to look at what impacts that would have on the possibility of even putting in a, a sign if you do go to 1,500, as opposed to staying at 500 or 1,000. And I don't know if you can talk to that.
What was that again, Mike? Sorry.
The effect of going from 500 to 1,000 on 1,500.
Uh, well, I, I.
Off the highway?
Yeah. I think that, you know, I have this visual here, and this is basically what I'm going by.
Yeah, you had mentioned multiple times, five football.
So, what I said last night was that, that, we've got two earmarked potential sites here. This, this is what I, this guy I thought is commercially zoned. I think, I thought all this, I thought this guy was the first residentially zoned person. So, this is, this is 1,500 feet from here to here, and that's the closest, I mean, there might be one here, but that's, there'd be, 1,500 feet would be the closest residential, residentially zoned resident of the town based on this. And I might be wrong, I don't know if that's residential, I thought it was all commercial within this area, and I thought, I think it is, commercial industrial. There might be a couple of houses, but it's still in commercially zoned, whatever that street is there.
South Washington.
Yeah, South, South Washington. So, I thought that this, these two houses were the first residentially zoned homes, and they're outside, they're more than 1,500 feet away from the closest possible site, and that's the way I said it yesterday.
Okay.
That's just dealing with this site?
Just with this site, which is basically, this is, you know, in my estimation, based on what, what I know about what's happening here, this, this is pretty much the only stretch where we might be able to get something. And that would be, and over here is all commercial. This is the only possible residential, and it's 1,500 feet or more away from the closest possible sign.
What about on Leonard Street?
Where's Leonard Street?
Yeah, my, my concern wouldn't be so much for this one, but future.
I just wanted to explain that for last.
Yeah.
But you weren't, you didn't think that you, that you.
Well, I still.
That sort of fast one being pulled on you there.
Hmm, I don't necessarily, you haven't given me any more of a comfort level. I think maybe the 1,500, you haven't had assumed that it was all res, commercial inside that radius.
I think.
But it sounds like there might be some residential, and maybe that was part of the, I think if you were to ask the FinCon, they, I believe, would walk away thinking that 1,500 feet was the setback to any residential property. I think if you were to poll them, because I was at the meeting, there was multiple quotes about five football fields and 1,500, that's a long distance, should not be a concern for any residential people.
If you just take a look at the 1,000?
Yeah.
Then that should alleviate that still, so 1,000 feet would be, is, there's no residential within that circle. And, and I was under the impression that that was a commercial industrial area where those house, those couple of houses are.
Yeah.
It was still in the commercial industrial zone.
I get it.
And the finance committee did not vote last night, they're waiting for your recommendation.
I think we should clarify when you meet with the finance committee, ask for their vote, because I really think that they're thinking 1,500.
Well, I think if you, if you think back to the conversation, that Barney said 1,500 could be too great, so it never.
I mean, 1,200 is a good compromise, 500 is too, too short of a distance, in my opinion.
This is 1,000 right here. That's more than enough.
I have not. Yeah.
This sighting, it's supposed, is this beyond the edge of the right-of-way for the highway?
There's a, the parameters that, this, there's a two-phase approval process. If, if this is approved at town meeting, then we will, we will come in front of the town with a formal proposal. If it's approved by the town, then we go to the state, and the state could still say, no, we don't, we're not, we're not on board. The, the, the parameters with the state are the ramps, you have to be, the, the lane has to be fully merged into 495, so you couldn't have anything on, on one of the ramps. So, that eliminates a couple of possible sites, both in this zone and then the, the other one across the street. And then, the two, the two businesses, commercial industrial zone, and then, you know, it can't be in wetlands, so it's basically in that, that basic area is where there's, there's the, the possibilities exist.
Yeah, it won't be on state property, it has to be on private property that's owned, business or commercial.
I, I tend to agree with Kevin, but the 500 is, is a little too short, much too short. I mean, roughly, you know, 1,000 to 1,200 seems about, what am I thinking, what, what does everyone else think? Any other questions on it?
Believe it or not, the FinCon discussion was about twice as long as ours. You would think it would be the other way around. They had a long discussion about this from a residential perspective, and granted, 1,500 was kind of the talking point throughout most of the meeting, and then one of the members mentioned, well, that might be a little restrictive, 1,500. So, you know, I'd be happy with 1,200, certainly not 500.
I'd like to know, there's several areas in town that are industrial zoned that these could be placed on. I'd like to get a, we're just looking at the site specific, this location, and I think that's fair when we're looking at a zone by law.
Can I just answer that? That's why it has to be within 500 feet of 495, which will eliminate all but two in the industrial areas in Norton.
So, it would be Blue Star Business Park, and then the industrial development along South Washington, as well as Commerce Way. Those are the only sites that have industrial right along, right along 495.
There'd also be a special permit, so they'd still have to.
In industrial.
What's the distance to residential from each of those locations?
Yeah.
But the, you have to be, the sign has to be within 500 feet of 495.
But we're looking at the light effect and how close they are to somebody else. It could be close to 495, but I don't, I wouldn't want, you wouldn't want it in your backyard, I wouldn't want mine. So, that's where, which one, I want to see how close those residential areas are to where these might be able to be placed.
Just for everybody's reading, I also think that, I think that the wording included in the, the draft article, I'm looking at this, page two of this part in our handout, does, is a very, it's very strongly written in terms of the, what we can look at in terms of when we evaluate, in terms of whether or not we choose to grant a special permit. So, that's, I think, we have to look at it in the entire context, not in a, with one number, I think.
That's true. We can arbitrarily reject it if, if in the language.
Yeah, but the, the language is pretty strong in this, and gives us multiple boxes we have to check.
In state statute, it also states that you have the ability to deny an application if it's having adverse effect on a residential area. Look at the state statutes, it's clear that these are supposed to go in areas that are business, commercial uses, but it does give provisions, has provisions that would give a community the ability to, you know, put conditions in to approve it, or if not, a special permit, you would have the ability to deny it, so. But you have the challenge, you're looking at bylaw language and trying to, but again, this could go in a few different locations, and it's difficult to, you know, until you have a project in front of you, it's, you know, you might want to just think about it more, more as a general policy.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm comfortable with the general, you know, about 1,000 feet, I'm comfortable with that personally. I wouldn't be comfortable with the 500 feet. And, and as, as has been said, it's going to be a special permit, and we take them case by case at that point.
If you're just looking at, I think it's 3.073, and we talk about the, the business character, 500 feet, it talks about the activity that can't be, not be visible, activity, this is the, the activity not visible from, let's see if I got the language right, not visible from the public way upon which the sign is facing, and the act. the public way upon which the sign is facing, and the activity, so it says, which activities do not include any activity not visible from, from the public way which the sign is facing? I don't know that we're talking about that here. The way I read it, the sign can be, has to be behind what, the activity that it's facing? And in this case, it's not? Just to be clear, we're talking about a sign that, that has no relationship to the, the premises or necessarily any activity going on in the town?
Correct. There'll, there'll be town content on there, there'll be public.
There's nothing in here that says it has to be on the content in here.
It'll be an off, off, off-premise sign.
It's an off-premise sign. And it could be, there's no restrictions of what it could be, and how it can change, how often it can change.
Oh, yeah, there's all kinds of restrictions.
And those restrictions can be added with the special permit. This isn't something that we're.
Well, and the state restricts, correct?
Yeah, yeah. The state, the state has all.
Yeah, we're getting ahead of our skis on this.
Well, no, because you're, you're talking about the square footage, and I'm, I'm, I'm going beyond that.
Mass Highway.
I'm concerned with the signage itself. There's, there's literally two billboard signs between exit one and exit 15. One is a for sale sign, and the other is the condine commercial center, commerce center, which looks like this.
Yeah, I've seen it.
Yeah, I've seen that, too.
That's, that's what's reflecting the town of Norton. And we talked about, yeah, it's on 24. The question I think this, this board needs to address, and maybe the town as well, is whether or not we want to start imposing a look that's like with 24 on what's more or less a pristine roadway of 495 which we front. Right now, the only sign we have representing our, our town is this sign, this sign that's overgrown and ridiculous. Now we're going to add one or two big pylon, big pylon signs, electrical digital signs that are nowhere else along 495 except one other location, and I think we ought to think about that as a town.
Again, and, and these signs would have to come in for their special permits, and then stipulations will be added at that point to, as to content and as to landscaping around, you know, that sign, you're right, absolutely looks terrible.
But just for Orin's information, your argument is exactly why the town meeting rejected the article back in 2015, that it didn't have anything to do with the, I mean, everybody wanted the extra revenue. The voters, besides a couple, didn't have any concerns, and it came down to, you know, do you want the town represented that way on 495 with a, a big neon sign or whatnot? But not, I'm not saying I agree with that, I disagree, but that was the argument, that's why it was rejected at the town meeting. So this would have to go in for, I mean, obviously this has to be approved by the voters, and I, and as far as the setback, I wish we, on this grid, had what the 2015 setback was to residential property. How come that's not included? That would be one of the primary elements, I would think, of the comparison. Do you know what it was back in 2015 as far as setback from residential property?
It was, I, I don't have it here, but it was, it was, when I saw 2015, it was 500 feet.
Okay.
It didn't change. A few other things did. But again, you have the option, if you would like to recommend to town meeting, different standard. And I should say, the state does not, from what I could tell, looking at a few provisions, does not have a standard from, a distance from a residential property. And one thing, just, this might muddy the waters a little bit, the way this is written, this is a residential structure, not just residential zoning, so just bear that in mind because we do have residential structures and industrial zoning and commercial zoning. So this is based on a structure, so it doesn't say, this does not say zoning, so it can, sometimes that language can make it, surprises can come up.
Well, it sounds like they may have over the last 24 hours.
You know, if this is passed as, you know, as written, you said there's only two locations?
There's, there's potentially, if, if you have a digital, the spacing between digital signs is 1,000 feet. The spacing between a static and a digital is 500 feet. So you could probably, it would probably be between two and four structures that could go along that stretch.
If I could, getting back to the, the setback to residential structures, if I'm reading your, your candle, foot candle chart correctly, the distance at 90 degrees to the sign has a maximum of three foot candles at what appears to be roughly 800 feet. Your chart has 857, but you scale it out, and the edge of that circle is about 800 feet at, at a maximum of three foot candles. Am I reading this correct?
I think it's .03.
But that's, whatever it is, is it .03 or 3?
At what degree?
Well, at 90. In other words, the, the brightest spot is 90 degrees.
Well, that's zero, well, zero degrees looking right at the billboard? Correct, yeah, that's .03 at, at 750 feet, that's .03.
Is that 750 feet is that distance?
The outside circle, correct.
Okay, so I'm, I'm just trying to put in perspective what, 1,200 feet? That's 50% again in terms of distance, so that it's, again, the analysis isn't here, but I, I assume it's much less than.
It diminishes substantially, yeah.
So it would seem that 1,200 feet would be an adequate distance in terms of illumination from the, from the sign through a residential structure.
Yeah, at those distances, it's neglectable. I mean, you already can see it. And then, as you can see, as you go off the angle, it substantially drops also, even when you're up close. Like I said, they're focused on people in their cars on 495 only.
Yeah, Steve, I'm, I'm fine with 1,000 or greater, certainly not less, because, you know, the FinCon did vote on it, but again, they had a very long discussion. I think one of the top selling points was five football field lengths from any house. And to cut it down to, you know, one and a half football fields, that's, as written in the proposed article, that's, and to have no additional length versus when it was rejected back in 2015, I don't think is.
Yeah, I don't want to speak for everybody. I think we seem to all be on the same page that 500 is, is not enough. I mean, if anybody disagrees.
And I think that can be part of the presentation at town meeting, basically, why is this here again? One of the things that we've done is we've increased the setback from any, we've doubled the setback from any residential structure. And that's, if that's what we recommend, and that's something that I think possibly people at town meeting might react favorably to.
I agree.
Is there a refresh rate or limitation on animations for the display?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I do have a packet I can hand out. I mean, 10 years ago, Mass, Mass Highway Department did a study on billboards. They basically hired independent consultants to go out and do this study, and they issued, was it 10 permits?
Pilot program.
Pilot program. They did a great job. I commend Mass Highway. They, they did it themselves, and they, there's a lot of traffic studies, and that's where they, they're all for them. They, they find them very useful and helpful for the public safety information all over the state, and, and what you, what John would have to do for the state. But yeah, they have limitations, absolutely no flashing, no animation, no scrolling. They have to change, they can only change every 10 seconds from one message in instantaneous to the other.
Okay. I only ask that in terms of the setback requirement. You know, you talk about the candle brightness, but in the absence of any light, the most dim light flashing is more obvious, so.
Right.
That's something to consider for a nu, nuisance to the local, you know, residential areas there, so when we think about these setbacks. I mean, the numbers that are identified there are kind of a static number, but if that is in motion or the change of the signs there, it's more.
Noticeable.
Noticeable to, to people in the area. So just, just something to, to think about. The other question I had, as you showed it drawn here, is that considered a single display, or is that two displays of a single structure? Or is it a one-piece display that emits in both directions?
It's a one pole with two, two, two faces on it, a single pole.
Single structure.
Single structure.
So, because the way the, the bylaw is written here, it, it didn't specify whether it's a structure or a sign, so in, in theory, that may not comply to the bylaw because it's two signs. It's not talking necessarily about the structure, so that's something just to think about.
That's a good point.
In terms of the way it's written.
Yeah, how many faces are allowed?
Right. It says they can't, the way it's written today here, it says that no billboard shall be located upon another structure. And then it also says, no digital electric billboard shall be erected within 1,000 feet of another. So I was just curious, is this two options here, or is it the idea to be both? And if this is kind of the concept that we want to go with, it should be reflective so that the bylaw allows it, right?
Right. Yeah, and that's Mass Highway, 1,000 feet between them. And, and Mass Highway, they have the staff, they come out, they measure, they enforce, and they make sure there's nothing going on that's not supposed to, they do enforce it.
Yeah, but just so that we, if in whatever language we do adopt as a town, should reflect something that can be, you know, executed in reality.
Right.
The, the other side of it, too, is you talked about the dimming feature of it. With it being LED, is, is it a stepped dim, or is there a period of time around thus that it may be brighter than the 3% or 4% that it is?
No, it steps down gradually. It doesn't just go from one brightness down noticeable difference. You don't even really notice it. It's such a gradual change to the ambient light. And even on a bright, even on a cloudy day, you know, when those thunderstorms roll in in August and it's dark out in the afternoon, it will dim down to 50, 40%, whatever that ambient light is, and then it comes back. It's very important. I mean, if it was the same brightness as it is during the day at nighttime, it would be awful.
Yeah, yeah, sure, yeah.
And that's why the state has these limitations. .3 foot candles was done by numerous engineering lighting companies hired by the states come up with that.
And that includes maintenance on that function to ensure that it performs in that capacity over a length of time, that, you know, not after, let's say, three years, that dimming capacity then, you know, starts to fade and, and it's brighter, there's a maintenance on the signs that ensures they're operating correctly long-term.
Correct. Actually, the photocell, if it's not seen by the controller or if it malfunctions, it goes to the full dim. So during the day, you wouldn't even see it. It would be that dim, and that's where it needs service.
Scott, I think the regulations on animations and the, they're also written into our town bylaws as well, so that's in there as well. I think to your point about the, the language in terms of the double facing, is it, does it make sense maybe to cite the distance between structures as kind of the pylon, perhaps? Is like the pylon for, any built, digital electronic billboards should not be erected within 1,000 linear feet of another? Because otherwise, what are you measuring from? And otherwise, that, as you mentioned, the double-faced sign could be interpreted as two billboards directly next to each other? I'm not sure if the, is the pylon the best way to do that? Is that?
I, I think it would be, Tim.
To keep it in the, the thought process of what we're doing here. I can't think of another way to word that, but I'm obviously, only one person.
Mass Highway spec is 1,000 feet from the face of the billboard to the face of another billboard, in that direction that it's pointing.
That would make sense, too.
That would work. We'd mimic that language.
Are you writing that down, Paul?
Yes.
Perfect.
Do we have any, any further questions from the board?
And this has nothing to do with the signs per se, it's more an editorial thing. Under Section A, where at the end of it, it says digital electronic bill, number two, digital electronic billboards in the industrial zone district. If granted a special permit under Section 84D2, there's no reference to special permit under D4, 84D2. I'm not sure why that reference is there, Mike. 84D2 just talks about freestanding signs, but there's no reference to special permit. So whether it makes more sense to just end it at zoning district if granted a special permit by the planning board, because the, the section above that talks about a special permit by the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So strike if granted?
No, strike, just under Section 84D2.
Just put, if granted, if granted a special permit by the planning board.
Okay.
Not under Section D4D2, 84D2.
I'm always in favor of not sending people on regulation chasing throughout the book.
Well, I've been chasing, I'm thinking, I forgot, is it eight, Section 84? No.
One, one other comment. When it failed back in, four years ago, there was a financial benefit to the town, right? I think it was $30,000 a year for 10 years or something. Now, I don't know what the agreement is with these folks, but as far as approving the article, is there any stipulation for future applicants that there be a financial benefit to the town as well? Or can they just put the sign up with a special permit with no, you know, no, no benefit?
Well, you, I know you can't put that into your, your zoning bylaw, but I would think that the state would be reluctant to grant a permit if the town wasn't in support of it. And if someone doesn't give us a mitigation agreement, we're not going to be in support of them getting a permit to put a sign up. And I know, John, you've probably seen it. So what we're, what we're looking at now with the sign for the mitigation would be $300,000 per sign. Norton businesses would get a 15% discount, I think it is, on advertising on the sign. The state requires that there be free advertising for the state on, on the sign, and Carol Advertising would give us the same amount of free space on the sign. How many hours is it, John?
15 hours a month.
15 hours a month of time on the sign. And the police and fire department have been having an issue with their radios in Commerce Way, and so one of the things we, they've also agreed is that, that allow us to put a repeater on the sign so that it would help with their communications.
And not that it has anything to do with us, but the 15 hours, is that stipulated that it's rotated throughout the day at 2:00 in the morning, 15 hours is in the?
Yeah, well, that's the state. Being a small operator, we wanted to check that box as soon as we could, so I, I, I got that 15 hours right out of the way, and the state didn't like that. They wanted us, they wanted us to rotate it in throughout the day, so that's what we have to do. And, and we shut ours off at midnight, too.
Is that, that $300,000 up front or overtime?
Up front. And there's an Amber Alert component, too, that Daktronics is involved with the Missing and Exploited Children's. Basically, the, if there's an Amber Alert, it, it comes right up on the board. We have no control over it, and it, and it displays up until the Amber Alert is concluded.
And that will come back on after midnight, after it was shut off, if?
I, I don't know that. I, I don't know that. Probably not.
Override that? It depends on how you're blanking it at nighttime, but typically, an Amber Alert will override everything.
Yeah.
And put it up.
Yeah.
In the second paragraph, the word except, in one version is in, one version is out. This is in the second paragraph. In, in your notes, it's taken out, but I think in the warrant, it was in. I don't know that it wants to be out, if that's what you're doing.
The first bullet or the second bullet, Orin?
The second bullet. The word except is taken out, and I think in the warrant language, it's in. Am I correct?
It's in the warrant.
It's taken out now.
So only signs permitted exclusively allowed. Even that one, it doesn't, I think it probably needs to be in. I'm not sure why it came out. I'm not clear why the second bullet is just limited to directional signs. I shouldn't also apply to these digital signs being approved by the authorizing agency to show that they're not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Somebody struck out except, except, I guess if we could understand why, that would help.
I think there's some confusion, because the official warrant has the word except in there. I think this.
On the first bullet.
Well, it depends on what you're looking at. The warrant itself is what's posted, and that's the official language that's at least being proposed. being proposed. It's there.
It's there.
Oh, I see. You're up here. I thought you were down.
And it says two, one and two.
Yeah, why is that?
It's in the warrant.
Hold packet over. Nope, keep going.
The except gets.
It matches in context, just not literally.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Or textually, actually.
Oh, no, no, that one, yes.
I don't understand why it would be removed, so can we edit?
Is except, do you have the warrant?
I have, well, I'll have the warrant. I have it on.
Except is in.
Town's website.
In the language in the warrant? Yeah, because.
Another one it's not.
Yeah, and there's, in the one that's on the warrant, that's your existing bylaw. So that, I don't know why that would come out. All that's being changed is adding two there that would allow digital electronic billboards in the industrial zoning district if granted a special permit by the planning board.
So the word except should remain in?
Yeah, and I think it is in on the warrant.
Well, in whatever we're looking at, it should, yeah.
So that strike through should be?
Unstruck.
Unstruck, yeah, unstruck.
But it's not in here.
Yeah, no, it's, so we'll just make sure that that's corrected on this.
Yep.
And then I'm not clear why you would change, limit that to no directional signs. No directional signs shall be authorized except upon authorizing agencies determination. Assuming the electronic billboards are likewise subject to authorizing agencies determination. It's a state authorized agency. I don't know why we're limiting it to just directional signs.
I would have to look back at eight B to know what the such signs was referring to.
Oh, because it's outlined.
At the time, before this proposed addition of digital electronic billboards, eight B was referring to eight A, which only dealt with directional signs. So that's probably why someone didn't pick up on the fact that now that we've added additional language to eight A, which include or allows for digital electronic, the thought didn't remain consistent and include digital electronic. So I think it does make sense that that eight B is now proposed. Read that such signs, excuse me, no directional sign nor digital electronic billboard shall be authorized.
Well, that's also outlined in the last bullet there regarding electronic billboards.
Well, instead of guessing, who amended the article language?
Yeah.
And can we just get an explanation of why it was changed that way?
So that would be a question, Mike? Question is, who amended, who submitted the amended language?
Yes. That was language that we had drafted previously for the previous attempt to change.
Yeah, because that language for the electronic billboards is down here. So it's repetitive, but.
But we just use the existing article that we have today instead of going back to what the amended article was for the 2015, which failed, use today's article in place, I mean, you know, it was in place today and just amend it based on what we're trying to accomplish with the small modifications that were, that we've talked about.
For B.
For the whole, for everything, yeah.
Yeah, that's what was done, I believe, right? And.
I know. Yeah.
Just change the distances.
No, no.
Instead of two thousand feet, a four ninety-five, five hundred feet. And instead of five hundred feet from any residential structure, a thousand feet, was it?
So no other language was changed in the body of the bylaw that was different from what's in place today?
Just the insert of the, and everything that's underlined.
Everything that's underlined and under B.
Yeah, that's the way it should be then. So that, that makes sense. So you referenced back in the 2015, Mike, this would confuse me.
Yeah. There were a few other changes in 2015 that didn't carry forward here that I've pointed out at the end where the height, the maximum height is ninety feet proposed now, but it was seventy feet in 2015. The frontage of the lot was a hundred and fifty, is a hundred and fifty feet now, was a hundred and twenty feet back in. And then the other one was the number, number of billboards per lot. There's nothing stated in this version, but back in 2015, it did say no more than one billboard per lot, which might not be an issue considering the distance that's between them, but I would just suggest putting that in just to.
But then you have the, facing each direction, would that be, that would be two? Or is that all considered just one?
It's just one.
Getting too deep into the weeds here, but as I read this, for any digital electronic billboard locating on, located on a lot abutting another lot containing a residential use, the minimum setback shall be, whatever we said, a thousand. But if, if you had an industrial lot abutting another industrial lot that was, say, three hundred feet, this doesn't apply the way this language is written. Why do we have that qualifier that says abutting another lot, on a lot abutting another lot containing a residential use? Why don't we simply say that it, you know, will not be within a thousand feet of a residential structure?
That would be simple.
I agree with that. Yeah.
Where did the language of the qualifiers come from that we're adding into this? You got that from someplace else? Because I'm noting in three oh seven four, no permit shall be granted for a sign which the director determines would not be in harmony with or suitable for the surrounding area or would be a significant damage to visual environment. That's not in here, I don't know. We're just talking about detrimental to the neighborhood. I don't know why it's be suitable, in harmony, suitable surrounding. Is one director looks to, I don't know why we shouldn't be able to look to that as well. My question is, obviously, it's a special permit, but this board in the past has been reluctant to step back from something they've granted to somebody else. I don't necessarily agree with that position, but if that's how they're taking it, the more latitude you have in making this determination and not limiting yourself in terms of what you can qualify, the better off you're going to be in being able to prevent situations that you want, don't want to have happen. As we're talking now, correct me if I'm wrong, you're suggesting that you would be able to put two to four of these billboards within a stretch of land that you're looking at? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that's just spitballing here. Yeah, I think you've, depending on whether it's static or digital.
And that's based upon what kind of distances, that's with a thousand feet.
Yeah, that would, it's, it's.
With a thousand and five hundred to a static.
So you're going to have a row a thousand feet apart of, you can have up to four of these pylons, digital pylons?
It probably, you're saying it probably wouldn't be four digital, there might be a static in there.
I believe in our proposal to the town, we were actually asking, if we're providing mitigation, we're actually asking it to be limited because we don't want that either. So we don't want four where, you know, where we've already sort of invested into the two. And so that's something that the town would have control over, limiting the amount, which we wouldn't have any problem with.
Are there any other questions or changes from the board on this? There are four different, four different points for this, this public hearing here. So I know we have gone through letter A so far, but I don't know if the board wants to vote on each one individually or just go through them all and vote at the end on changes. How do people feel about that for the entire article?
Remind me what the timing is for this process, for this, this, I guess, our comments for this warrant. So I think we made a lot of changes, and I almost want to see them in a final form before.
I agree.
Problem is, you need to make a recommend, well, we need to make a recommendation to town meeting tomorrow if this comes up. So if it doesn't come up tomorrow and it's deferred, then maybe there's an opportunity, but we have, I forget where this is on the warrant.
Overall, there haven't been a lot of changes to this that we've discussed. I mean, my point, my point in that was that there, you know, we have to, we have to vote on this article, and there's going to be four different aspects of it. So I wanted to see if the board would like to go through each, each of the four before making decisions or just take them one by one. We also need to get feedback from, from anyone in the audience, too, so.
I figure we're going to recommend changes, Steve. It's probably best to do them one by one, just to make sure we're very clear on what we're motioning and potentially pushing forward to town meeting. I think if we let too much time linger, we're going to get maybe confused, and we want to make sure we're very clear. And as we move forward, I realize time is of the essence, you know, time, town meeting is tomorrow night, and I'm sure all of the boards will be meeting before seven o'clock to hear our recommendation and what we're willing to, you know, agree to for town meeting. So I think knowing how much conversation we've had on this one, it might be easiest to do them one at a time.
Okay.
That's just my.
I agree, actually.
Will it be easier if I make motions and, you know, obviously, people can vote them down, but just to move this along that the planning board.
Well, if you just hold that for just a second, I want to make sure that if there are any other questions or any changes, and then I'd like to give to the audience if there's anyone that needs to, would like to speak regarding this. So anything else from the board?
So normally, under regular timing, I would go with what Tim said and ask for the revised article to be presented at a future meeting so we can read it in its final form before we vote on it because there were a lot of changes, and who knows whether they're going to be incorporated correctly as we spoke tonight between today and tomorrow, tomorrow night's town meeting.
Yeah, well, we'll list, I mean, we'll list them one by one through that. But I mean, in the interest of, you know, and I understand wanting to make sure, make sure everything is in there correctly. I think we should take the time to go through it all. I don't think that there were that many changes, there was a lot of discussion, but not enough to warrant, you know, kicking the can down the road again, as this board tends to do. So I think if there are any other questions on this or changes, corrections, additions, subtractions from the board, we can go through them now, otherwise I'll ask the audience if anyone has anything to say on this.
I would just like to suggest adding, not in, that it has to be in harmony with, that no sign be allowed that's not in harmony with or suitable with the surrounding area or would significantly damage, would significantly, significant damage to the visual, visual environment like to have, or would that be added to the criteria. Consistent with the three oh seven.
Can you repeat that, Orin, and then first tell me where you would like that inserted?
Well, you list on the bottom here a bunch of criteria, and I would like to suggest that that would be included as part of it, and it's coming from three oh seven point four, which says no permit shall be granted for a sign which the director determines would not be in harmony with or suitable for the surrounding area.
Orin, you're reading from the mass, the mass DOT one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I have it. No permit shall be granted for a sign which the director, which is actually the state, determines would not be in harmony.
I would suggest we might want to take that criteria for our own.
Just number four, Orin.
Or at least put in that, a determination of whether or not it's in harmony with, as one of the criteria we can look at. So we're not looking at four in a row. We're not looking, we can make that determination of how close they are to one another.
So all of number four, Orin, is what you're thinking?
I don't know if you want to get into that. I think with just the first part of it, making that determination, we can consider other things, but I think I'd leave it with just the first sentence.
Okay.
Part of the first sentence.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or concerns on this? Yeah, you can come up to the.
My name's Ellen Valentine. I live at seventy-one Northwestern Street. When I heard the feature that the amber alert would, would automatically come up, I think that's priceless to save the life of a child. I think that's worth any distance from any house. I literally would put a sign in my front yard if I thought it could save a child's life that quickly. So I think that's something that really should be considered. That's hugely important, and I don't know of any other place in town or around town or in the near area that features such a thing, so I think that's priceless. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Okay.
Could I say one thing?
Absolutely.
Just to comment on, I do have some brochures or handouts I'd like to hand to you just to keep. I didn't have them the other night, but these are on amber alerts. You know, it is a system that's, it's basically created by the National Center for Exploited Children, you know, cooperation all over the country with the digital billboard owners. It automatically goes out under a zip code. So I say, God forbid you have something, it's a tool that the police, the police enforcement can use, and they're all for them also. So like I said, this is an actual picture. I have six of the copies. That's an actual photo of an actual amber alert in progress. They do happen, unfortunately, and it's been a great resource for the law enforcement.
Yeah, I think it's fantastic.
Is there a hierarchy in terms of how the amber alert goes off via different communication systems? The billboard being one, but cell phones?
Well, I think that's for everything. I mean, they don't put on an amber alert until it meets all the qualifications. The billboard is just like going to your smartphone, going to WBZ, going to ABC News. You know what I mean? They're all have the same credentials before it goes out.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Joe, now I think would be a good time for your, your motions.
I move that the planning board.
One point of order. Do we need to close the public hearing for each article, or are we keeping the public hearing open for all four articles?
Yeah, that was my question in going through for each.
Now that I, now that I made my earlier statement, then maybe we should vote on each, then we just keep the public hearing open until the end?
I believe we can keep the public hearing open to the end, and we can vote on these. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
The only concern I have with waiting till the end is it's already confusing trying to remember what we're doing with this one, let alone the others.
Agreed.
So if you'll permit me, I'll move that the, I'm actually reading from the warrant article language, not the notes that Paul has. So I move that the planning board recommend that article, which I think is nineteen, be recommended with, as printed, with the following revisions, that under Section A, which starts with only signs, that we strike the proposed language that reads under Section eight for D two. that reads under section eight, four, D2, and instead put granted by the planning board. That in the, I'll call it the last paragraph of the article, that we change, that we change the 2,000 feet within, 2,000 feet of 495 to 500 feet, that the... That the...
Shall not be...
Setback from...
For any digital...
Electric billboard location shall not be within a thousand feet of a residential structure.
Thousand feet from any residential structure.
It's two lines below that last one.
But we've got complicating language here that, for any, right above that, for any digital electronic billboard located on a lot abutting another lot...
Oh, that's right, that's right.
...with residential use, the minimum setback, that language to read, no digital electronic billboard shall be located within a thousand feet of a residential use.
Are we saying use or structure?
Structure. Well, it, I think either way applies, but...
I would say structure would be better, yeah, because, because then you get to the lot lines and...
So, okay, so that language, that sentence would read instead, no digital electronic billboard shall be located within a thousand feet of a residential structure. And then further down, where it starts, no digital electronic billboard shall be erected at the special permit granting authority determined that it will be, that it will obstruct a view of scenic beauty and, and interest, or place of historic interest, comma, nor shall a permit be granted that is not, if, if it is determined by the planning board that such permit would not be in harmony with, or suitable for the surrounding area, nor would, or would do significant damage to the visual, to the visual environment.
Pulling from that state.
Pulling from the CMR.
And that was 307.4 that you're pulling?
Right.
Yeah, first sentence.
Did you want to add to this, also no digital?
No, only because that's, that's repeated here in, in the language of this that said...
Just, just going back to the, to the beginning, if you want to include the...
The accept is in the...
Oh, that's...
Well, yeah, I'm reading from the warrant, and it's, it's, it's already there.
And then this here. Granted a special permit, instead of under section...
You said that, yeah.
Okay, you did, okay.
We addressed the number of billboards per lot.
Sorry?
And that was the, yeah, that was the last one.
Did he mention that one?
Not yet.
What did I do? I thought it was...
No, it was just the final thing, it was the, at the very end, number of billboards per lot.
Well, that's in there, so it's, I don't know.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
The number of billboards per lot.
All right, so that's not in there.
Joe, you, did you also, were you going to talk about the, the distances measured from the face of the billboard? Or the distance between them? That was a motion. That was a discussion. The sentence right before the one you just made the motion on, no digital electronic...
That's already in there.
That's no...
You added the language to clarify. I thought I heard you...
I was, in terms of the distant, in terms of the double-sided billboard, is that what you're...
No, in the terms of being within 1,000 feet of one another, the conversation that you all had was as measured, you, you had raised the question, how do you measure it? And then, and it was as measured from the face of the billboard, did you...
Well, that's in the code already.
Okay, so no need to add that here.
I didn't think so, because I thought the language was, was 1,000 feet of another, that's...
It was, it was discussed in connection with, would it be unclear that one billboard could have two faces facing the opposite direction, and whether we'd be, that would in and of itself be in violation of the 1,000-foot distance? But if that's already in the state statute, then it's redundant.
But that's only...
We have a motion.
Are we just missing, are we missing a sentence about number of billboards per lot, or did we already cover that in language? I don't think we, we might have to add a sentence for that, because I didn't see...
But how, number of billboards per lot?
We'll see this little grid here.
It's not, the...
But how can it, all right, let's, unless the lot is, you know, 1,000 feet plus, it still has to be 1,000 feet apart, and, I mean, and I don't think there are any lots that are 1,000 feet, but if there are, what do we care? In other words, they still have to be 1,000 feet apart, if it just so happens they land on the same lot, and we're okay with 1,000-foot spread.
Whoever owns that, well, I don't, I just, a little added protection for the others, I guess.
Well, I don't see, if it's going to be 1,000 feet apart anyways, I don't see why it would make a difference if it's on the same, the same lot.
To date?
Personally, I, I don't see the difference.
I think any limitation, you need to provide some limitations, at least, there could be a lot, I don't know the other lots that are, that are in play, we don't have it in front of us.
Well, the limitation would be 1,000 feet, so an additional, I mean, that's, I don't think there's a need for an additional limitation to that.
It would also have to be 1,000 feet from a residential structure.
Yeah.
1,000 feet's not a long way, like Orin noted, on the highway, so, you know, that added protection could disallow 1,200 square foot, and you might have to go on a second lot, which spreads it out by 2,000 feet, which may not be a bad thing, so.
Well, we also have the wording that Orin added from 307.4, which I think would give the board a lot more discretion to prevent, like you said, rows of them. I, I personally don't see the need to, to add that in, but...
Just a quick note, assuming this bylaw that you gave me, Paul, it identifies in here in the definitions, the area of sign, and it says projecting and freestanding, the area of a freestanding or projecting sign shall have only one face, the largest one, of any double-sided or multi-facing sign counted in calculating its area, so they kind of specify face there, but it's not clear as well, so I don't know if that is a way to alleviate that, but...
I think it's, it's outlined in that first, the second bullet point on page two, the two digital electronic billboards in the...
But that's not the language of the article.
That wasn't in the article?
I don't, I don't see it, I thought it was. That's why you have to actually look at the, what's legal is the warrant law.
I think, I think, I think specifying the number of signs per lot is not necessarily helpful, and if anything else, it'll just make somebody submit an A and R, and voila, there's two lots.
You're learning to be devious.
So it's not, it's not really a preventative measure.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I mean, I, I'd like it to pass this time, too, and if we're going to provide this kind of a comparison, people in the town will automatically question, the way they think is, what's the difference between what failed in 2015 and one versus not stated? That may be enough to raise enough of a red flag for enough people in the audience to reject the article, so, that's really the main reason for it.
Well, we're also adding quite a bit of leeway for the, the planning board to, to deny it.
It's a fair point.
We're about one month before a continuous lot's under the same ownership, that avoids your...
Then you sell it to an LLC that doesn't, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think Scott brought up a good point, though, about the, the double billboard.
I mean, if you add in there where it's written in the warrant, shall be erected with 1,000 linear feet from the face of another, I think that would allow the double-sided.
Is it, do you have the article? Is it in there?
Yeah, you're going back to the bylaws as a whole, not the article itself.
No, it's the, the article.
No, the article.
As, uh, D2, as written, as it's written, you just add in there what direction that linear feet is going.
Okay.
Because those wouldn't be face to face, right?
Correct.
That, that is in the article under, under A. It's underlined, and two digital electronic billboards in the industrial zoning district.
I think that two is like a A subpart two.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the number two.
Number two, not two boards, but...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is this the same issue you have here? This is the one we're missing?
Yeah, we eliminated references of that, because D4...
Unless you want to, there's a definition, if you want to modify that.
It works in the other place, because it's just...
Yeah, we can easily modify it, it's just how to word it.
I hear you're switching over.
Yeah.
That's adding, again...
A new paragraph, okay.
What if we were to put under definitions, digital electronic billboard, it goes on, it says, on a rotating basis, freestanding, comma, which may or may not be single or double-sided.
That sounds like it solves it.
We'll repeat that, on a rotating basis, freestanding...
Comma, on a rotating basis, freestanding, comma, which may or may not be single or double-sided.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Does that conclude your motion?
Yeah.
I'll second Joe's motion.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion, further discussion?
I just, again, raise the question of whether or not, yet again, the town is, the only reason I can see for this sign, I agree, amber alert might be significant, but it looks like we're, that we're selling the town again, and I have an objection to that. There's no real reason it's not here to benefit, if it's here to benefit a particular tenant, a particular owner, or the town in general, that's one thing. We're just basically letting people advertise from our town, and it's something that's unique to 495, and I think for us to step out and to allow this in its entirety, in terms of several of these things that become 324, is something I can't really support. And I think this board can help take that position as well, and I, I encourage them to do so.
Just, just to reiterate, the bonuses to the town would be the $300,000, that 15 hours of time for the town, 15% discount to all businesses in town, and the amber alert in itself is, is a bonus for everyone, I think.
And we did double the, we did double the setback from residential property compared to 2015?
There is no billboard signs on 495, there's two, one of which is a disaster, the other one is...
On these, I mean, and this gives us, this gives us leeway to, you know, to add...
Personally...
No, there's a, there's a new digital, it's just gone up the last few months. With 495, I think, turned to 25, it's, it's on the way to the cake, it just went up in the last few months.
Personally, I think to that point, if, if we are going the billboard route, the electronic and the digital is the way to go. It doesn't look, I think, in disrepair, it doesn't look like it's falling apart, it's much easier to change out. As someone who drives up and down 95 every single day, the digital billboards look very professional, in my opinion. I think they're very nice to look at, where some of the other static displays are not so much so. I think they also attract a higher clientele, I hate to say that, in, in those terms, but I think that they do. And also, as someone who works for a Department of Transportation, who issues safety messages throughout the year, to know that our community would be supporting that, I think holds merit with me personally, as someone who works in the transportation industry, and who deals with highway safety, and on a weekly basis talks about crashes, and what our stats are in the state of Rhode Island for that. And knowing that we could potentially stop a drunk driver, or have someone ask to take the keys, goes a long way personally in my book.
All right, there's been... Can I just get a clarification, on the last motion you just made with the shall not be double-sided?
No, no, not shall, not be...
Right, may or may not be, right.
Single, may or may not be, single or double-sided.
Right. What about the remaining part of that sentence?
Yeah, no, that stays, that's...
And it stays? Okay, thank you. One last question?
Sure.
The height of the, or, do you want to keep it at 90 feet, or 2015 it was 70?
Don't have it, you're gonna see it.
I, I, not, yeah, just want to make sure...
I'm going off what's printed on the warrant, and, you know, to me, 90 versus 70 isn't, isn't problematic.
Oh. My other question, that was article, Joe had said 19, but is it 19 or is it 21? Because I know that 19 or further down.
This is the warrant, no, this doesn't have it.
Just for clarification.
It's on, I didn't print off the...
According to what's posted on, it's article 19 on the warrant?
It is, okay.
19, Mike?
Okay. So there's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, no.
So, put on the line, Julie?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Kevin?
Aye.
Orin?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Pass five to two?
Okay. On to number two.
Number two. Commercial and industrial driveway waivers, this is something we've talked about quite a bit.
Well said. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right bottom of that one.
Does the board have any questions or changes to this one?
This is our article, right?
Yeah, is it? Now, what is the number of this one now? Because I know...
Says 20 in our notes.
Yeah. That could be wrong.
I, yeah.
Okay, I was using the, what was on the website, so...
I just want to make sure that we're on, we're clear.
Okay. They've got the actual warrant.
Eighteen.
Joe has the warrant.
Article eighteen.
Paul has the warrant in front of him.
That would be the, this one.
Eighteen.
For the driveways? Okay, so this would be article 18. To those in the audience, they were numbered incorrectly, so. Do we have any questions, changes from the board?
Yes. The comment you have in this, that this was voted unanimously at the February 5th meeting is incorrect.
Okay.
I know I voted for it, I think it was a four to three vote, if I'm not mistaken, you can verify that.
I thought that was six to one.
I, I don't think I voted for it. I believe that...
It was very close.
I think it was not necessarily on the merits of the article, but more just in terms of process, in terms of, um, whether we wanted to take a longer look at it, rather than trying to get it on the specific town meeting or warrant, but, um, yeah. But I mean, at this time, I don't have any issues with the, the article as written, even though I didn't vote for it coming on the warrant, necessarily, if that makes sense.
Let's make the change to correct the vote, well, as written.
Those are only, those are just, those are just...
That's just our, not the article.
Yeah, that, that's not actually in the warrant language. Yeah, that, that's not actually in the warrant language.
Yeah.
Since the board has been reconstituted, if I could just take a second to discuss this, I understand this was a vote of the board to recommend it, but it's now coming for us to recommend it to the town.
Yeah, I think, I think we can briefly discuss it, I, I think.
If, if I may, listen, Bill Swanson, um, this came up, the, the bylaws call for a 50 foot driveway. The problem that, that I encountered or raised was, in particular, I don't know that I have a real problem with a single lot, single user having a 50, having less than a 50 foot driveway, if he's having a major truck, truck depot, and they can sustain it, that's fine. The problem that came in for me for this site is basically, this was used as a part of a common driveway. And basically, this sort of common driveway is servicing and providing access to three retail buildings of over 41,000 square feet, with 210 parking spaces, two warehouse buildings totaling 350,000 square feet, with 140 parking spaces, and 83, uh, truck bays, 75 feet long. And, um, I had a concern that as a, as a common driveway, that we would not at least retain the 50 foot requirement. It ended up coming, being reduced down to 36 feet. So we would now have a driveway that's shared for retail uses, uh, with a warehouse use that has major, large trucks at the same time. And I just thought that add in particular was something that was problematic. In addition to which, the bylaw for common driveways requires that they provide vehicle access to two, but not more than four buildings. And we ended up approving a project which has five buildings, that has access, be it, be it through a, a parking lot, it still has access. So what I'd suggest, um, I have no problem, again, with a single lot being determined by the, by the board, in terms of a special permit as to what is required. But I'd suggest eliminating from this definition, any specifics relative to common driveways. I think that should be, um, allocated to what's in the bylaw now, and if they have a problem with it, they can address it. My first preference would be for any common driveways, but if not, if nothing else, any common driveways that, um, addresses two separate types of uses. So you can't have, uh, one driveway for industrial use, butting a, a commercial use or retail use, uh, and not have to come through and walk process to make it sure it was clear and enough driveway and, and turning radius to be comfortable. So my, my suggestion would be, um, at least to modify it, to have that provision, so allowing the planning board to adjust the square footage, uh, based on a special permit, uh, perhaps, that, that would not apply to a common driveway that services more than, um, two different classifications of uses.
But this is permissive language, this is not obligatory language, if there's some, um, there are some characteristics that would suggest that a, anything less than a 50 foot driveway, uh, is gonna be problematic, then we can stick to the 50 foot. This is simply allowing for a less than 50 foot driveway, and in the, the instant case that, that we're talking about here, specifically the Blue Star, East Main Street is 28 feet wide, so I will never understand why East Main Street can handle all the traffic, not only for this park, but everything else going up and down East Main Street, trucks included. If 28 feet works, why would, I think we settle on the 36 feet? And we could, we couldn't do it ourselves, the way this language is written, the, the way the existing language is, is written. With the language as being proposed, we can make that, that assessment and make, make for that allowance. In the, in this particular case, they had to go to the ZBA, and the ZBA approved the 36 foot width. Again, that's just.
This, this doesn't, this doesn't change the, the requirements, this allows the board to, to waive them.
When it makes sense, obviously.
Yeah. I, I think, I think it's exactly what was discussed and approved as written, I, I don't, I don't see any need to change it. It, it's not changing driveway lengths, it's not changing anything, uh, widths, uh, it's allowing the board to make the changes, or to approve, uh, changes, so. Any further discussion?
I move that we approve, uh, article 18.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I keep jumping.
I forgot, no, that's my fault, anyone in the audience, um, have any questions? Okay. Sorry, go ahead, Joe.
I, I rec, I, I move that the planning board recommend article 18 as written.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, Julie?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye.
Orrin?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
So Paul was, uh, prophetic in, in noting that the planning board, this is the operative, uh, this is his recommendation, the vote is six to one.
Well, again, that's.
I, and I'm, I'm being snitty.
All right.
This is an example of less is definitely more, I don't know why I put unanimous, it didn't matter, you voted to approve it, so.
Yeah.
My fingers were, were ahead of my brain.
Educational and religious facilities, this is article, do we have?
This renumbering is really killing us.
Well, can I, I, I wanna explain it, cause I went online to the clerk's website, and there was another version, and it had a different numbering scheme, so. My apologies.
I hope I've got the.
Is it 16?
Grabbed this off the, uh, website myself.
This is what Mike gave us, so this would be, no, um, no.
Okay.
So just so.
Article 16 is the, uh.
Is the next one.
But it has, uh, three pieces to it.
Is this 20? This might be 20.
This is educational and religious?
Yes.
Okay.
Seventeen, four, one seventy-five, four. Uh, yes, 16.
Is it 16?
Okay, well, I'm looking at it online, so I, I.
Oh, they did include 16 and part of se, uh, okay, that's, yeah, this is article 16, and, so, the, the genesis of this is, as, the, uh, older members will remember, we had a, a special permit application on Mary Jo Road that dealt with, uh, essentially group housing. And that brought to the forefront the issue of the Dover Amendment, or, uh, chapter 40A, section three, which deals with uses that are essentially exempt from additional zoning requirements. So as I was diving into that, and still being fairly new, um, certain, I realized that we, I think we had a couple of potential inconsistencies with our, with the institutional educational facilities, along with religious facilities, that, uh, under our current bylaw, in commercial and industrial, they're allowed by special permit. But as I looked at some of the case history, it appears as though case law had stated that there shouldn't be a special permit required for educational religious facilities in any cases. But they would still be subject to, you know, building permits and whatnot, but they would, they were an, as of, essentially an as of right use. So that's where that was the genesis of this application.
No, going back to Mary Jo Road, does the statute reflect educational facilities such as a school, or also essentially a dormitory or things like that?
That's a great question, um, I was not here when that issue came up. It talks about educational facilities, it does not.
Does it define educational facilities?
I don't, I don't recall it for, if Dover Amendment specifically says things like such as.
Yes, does, the question becomes, is a boarding house that is associated with a school, an educational facility, or is just the school the education facility? That would be, fall under the protected classification in my mind. And if not, I would almost want to specify in the chart, institutional educational facilities, not including dormant facilities, or something like that.
I don't know what the answer is, but I think that's handled by case law, I, I couldn't tell you. I, I only assume that things like dorms are considered part of an educational facility. I don't know that, but I, I, I would imagine that case law, I mean, the Dover Amendment was an outgrowth of a lawsuit. So I assume that was addressed in case law, I just don't know.
And it's a question if it's an on-campus dorm versus an off-campus, because I know we had an off-campus proposal.
Where does that kind of line happen between, yeah? Cause by that, right, you could throw a 50-story dorm in the middle of wherever you want, and there's nothing that, and.
Eternity House, a mile away from campus.
Something like, yeah, exactly, that's kind of the where does that.
Well, keep in mind, this proposal is only for making the change, because they're allowed as of right, in everything other than commercial and industrial, so. These would be for.
But when, but when Mary Jo Road came, if I remember our discussion, it was our position as a board and as a town, was that their specific use was something that did require a special permit. And I guess I wonder how consistent we're being in that, given the chart that I'm looking at, the chart here. Cause I know it's, that was basically, there wasn't a specific note anywhere about dormitories or something like that. And that's where that kind of, there was a bit of a gray area in that discussion, about whether they did need a special permit. And they withdrew the application with prejudice, I believe. With or without. Our position being that they would still need to come back for a special permit if they came back. I forget which.
They, they couldn't get a building permit, or they had a problem with the lot, so.
But that, but I, I want, I think, my thought process here is, I would want, just want to, if somebody came in not knowing all of that, that they would be able to read what we're putting in here as consistent with that position, that that type of facility would need to come before the planning board. Does that make sense?
We, I mean, one way to handle that would be to create a new category, because the issue with, like, with Mary Jo Road was, have it, we were questioning what it was actually classified as, because when we first saw it, we thought it was some type, type of, of, we didn't see it quite as a group home, the way it initially had been proposed to us. And so that was kind of the, one of the discussions we had started to have before it was withdrawn, was what exactly was the use?
Right.
But, um, so, but in this case, uh, I, I would say we, that may be a better conversation, a better opportunity for the public to weigh in, if we go back and look at the other uses, like, again, we have, under residential, we have boarding, uh, rooming houses and tourist houses, which, that could have, based on what we knew when it first came in, could have been under that. We have a, a significant lack of definitions in uses in our use tables, and so oftentimes, the building commissioner and I are just trying to figure out which one does this, do, do we fit it in, because it's not clearly defined. I'd be concerned if we start talking about dorms, that college might have an issue with us putting it here.
Right.
And.
Yeah.
And that's, but I, I do agree that we should be looking at that, but.
What if you turned it around and made it institutional facilities, including onsite residential? So tie it into, that's how we're defining it, as opposed to saying, offsite is not, you're saying, including onsite, onsite residential facilities.
But what we're doing.
But it's allowing them.
What we're attempting to do with this, right now, it is allowed in R eighty, sixty, and forty, in Village Commercial. And to be candid, if it's allowed there, uh, I would just soon have it allowed in commercial and industrial.
It is allowed there now?
Yeah, it's allowed. The only thing right now is only for commercial and industrial, so this would be allowing it, so.
I realize I'm going outside of what is specifically written in the warrant, I'm just trying to, knowing the ambiguity that we had at the time, I wanna eliminate one little bit of it at a time.
You added a note, subject to reasonable rules and regulations and so on, bulk height. Can we, granted, it's allowed as a manner of use, but that doesn't stop us providing in, for educational facilities as a setback of X. I mean, right now, we have no, no separate setbacks requiring for these facilities. So basically, it's if it's a regular home, if you're having an educational facility, the parking requirements can be different, if it's a residential area, you know, so. It, it, I'm not sure where this language comes from, but query with respect to whatever we're doing, and maybe if we're already having, allowing it, could we or should we, in fact, introduce provisions in our bylaws that provide for setbacks? Uh, provide for heights and structures and lot areas and setbacks, if that's what's allowed, um, why don't, why don't we take the opportunity to do that, to give us some protection?
Well, they're still all subject to this building setbacks, I mean, that's.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we may want bigger setbacks if it's gonna be industrial use, if it's gonna be institutional use, if it's gonna be a religious use. The parking requirements may be very different. It's in a residential zone, what, what is the parking requirement for religious use?
Well, it's already, it's already allowed in the residential use, so.
Yes, but you're allowed to introduce reasonable rules and regulations, and I suggest, right now, our, uh, the restrictions we have don't address these. To put these in, if it's not a special permit, it's just site plan, you can't, you're gonna change the setback requirements for the site plan review? I don't think you can do that, I'm just saying, we may wanna review, if, if it's gonna be allowed as of right, and is, then why not take the opportunity to explore what are the reasonable regulations by reason of our, our bylaws, we can impose on that, being reasonable? I've, I was living in Sharon, and I had a problem where, um, the guy next door, they took it over for religious purposes, and the parking lot was crazy. They parked all over the place, you know, those types of situations are something we should be able to address. But I think in absence of having something in the bylaws as to what those are, uh, we're kind of playing catch-up. And I don't think, just a site plan review will let you do that.
That may be true, and I'm not suggesting it is or it isn't, but we're limited to what's proposed in the warrant. And the only thing we could do is either leave commercial and industrial the way it is, requiring a special permit, or change it to, yes. Um, you know, whether we wanna, at some future point, tighten this up, but this is what we're limited to, according to the warrant.
Yeah, I mean, I think the larger conversation is, is well noted, that this is something I think we have to take a deeper dive into, you know, and, and around what the use is, if there is an addition to the use table, I think that's probably a very good suggestion, Paul, because you're right, it's very limited, especially in the, in that first section of, you know, it's just like single dwelling or duplex, or, like, there's not a lot of choices. So it might need something that can flush it out, to Orrin's point, you know, what are the setbacks, what are the frontages, what's the parking requirements? We really don't have that.
Well, yeah, again, they're subject to those that are within the dimensional standards.
Right, but at this point, that's it.
That's it, right.
Um, so, just, um, I'm learning here, so, um, let's say, um, this passes the, we don't need a special permit, but we still go through site plan review if there's an applicant in an industrial zone?
Correct, yeah, yes, they're, they're still required, if they are, if they trigger a site plan review, so if a building's over 2,500 square feet, for example, they still have to do it.
Okay.
Site plan.
Yeah, cause what comes to mind is, I mean, obviously, for us and our, for our town, not generally speaking with this, um, article, but, you know, the major undeveloped land currently is on Leonard Street, and, you know, if a junior college wants to put a big facility there, and have no tie-in to town sewage, and do it all with septic, we have other ways to mitigate that, through site plan review or conservation commission and such, correct? Yeah.
Right, this is just specifically for a special permit?
Yes, got it. Meeting number two here, so I'm learning a little bit.
Two with an asterisk, you've been around. Any further discussion from the board? Anyone from the audience? Nope, okay. Do we have a motion?
Well, this is all one article, though, so probably one, do you wanna move parts?
We've been going.
I'm sorry?
We've been going one by one.
We're doing article by article, but I.
Passive recreational uses is the next one.
Is, is that in the same article?
No, no, I thought that was a separate article.
No, that was a separate article.
No. Part of it, they put the use tables together.
Oh, they put all the use tables together, okay.
Oh, so that's all the same, that's all Article 16 there? Okay.
Okay, so that's just part one.
Okay.
Well, and the next one, I think, has, is in a couple of areas. Anyway, we'll move it through.
Okay.
Well, I guess we keep moving.
So, okay. That's strange.
Yes, it is.
Why is...
What they did was they combined the use table and then the definitions as separate articles.
Clear.
Which I guess they would have their reasons for doing that, but they split two different amendments.
So that has to be all taken at once, then?
Yeah.
One vote for both of those, that's, okay, okay. Passive outdoor recreational uses.
Okay, and this one, Jen Carlinow is here, this one was initiated, Jen and I met a while back to talk about, she administers through the conservation, as the conservation agent, she helps each year with, throughout, with the town parks or town property to allow per, she issues permits for camping at places like Camp Edith Reed. But our current bylaw does not allow camping. It says campsites across the board, no, in every zoning category. So we had talked about changing that, and so what we did was, we created a definition essentially for passive recreational uses, which include camping and some other activities, trying to separate it from the larger, more commercial operations. So what we recommended is allow by special permit in all the zoning categories except industrial. So you would, if this approves, you would then see special permit, a special permit or special permit applications come forward. I know Jen is working on a special permit application, this passes for five or six properties to allow for passive camping, which has been happening for years. So this is just trying to codify that.
What zone are these campsites in right now?
Jen?
Most of them are, I think they're all residential.
Eighty?
They're all conservation. Right now, all the different properties are, I believe, residential areas. So people have been camping at the town forest, Rose Farm, Johnson Acres, Camp Edith Reed was private, now it's public property. So they've, they've all been residential areas where people will apply for a, it's basically a registration form. They, they send me a permit application, so I have all their contact information, I know who, you know, they have their phone number or email, the main contact person for whoever's camping, they have to notify police and fire of the date and the location of where they're going, and if they're proposing to have a campfire.
Are those under the auspices of conservation? Are there conservation restrictions on these properties, or...
Most of them are conservation property, which does allow for passive recreation, so camping, hiking, biking, non-motorized activities. There are two properties that are owned by the Board of Selectmen, so the islands on the reservoir, one of those is Board of Selectmen property, and then the other two or three islands are conservation property, and the town forest is managed by the Board of Selectmen.
What about an overlay district? My concern is, we're putting this language and applying it to regular residential areas, and I can get into the definitions as we go on, but I, I think if you make an overlay district, then we can be very clear and you can give you what you need with it, and there's no question that somebody's not going to put it next to my house. And I think that may resolve for me a lot of questions in terms of definitions and everything else. That's what we're doing now. And then give you the freedom, you know, it's protected, it's reserved for that purpose, and we just identify it, just, we can identify the zone, it's an overlay zone, just say in that zone, camping, and whatever it is you need to have done, can be done.
Mechanically, having an overlay, just thinking of these properties, they're all over town, are you going to have an overlay that encompasses the entire town? I'm just trying to think mechanically.
We have overlay districts for the water resource district.
Right, but it's a contiguous and area in its entirety, so that in order to make this an overlay, you'd have to have, I mean, I'm thinking from the, from, you know, the town forest on the eastern part of town to Camp Edith Reed on the western part of town, you pretty much cover the whole town.
Well, the other alternative is, is like you have a digital, a village commercial. We have commercial districts all over town.
Yeah.
Make it a district, it doesn't have to be an overlay district, make it a camping district, and identify the areas, because right now, they're not residential, it can't be used for residential, it's not going to be used for any other purpose. Let's identify them throughout the town, and just say, you can add to that, and then you can, you can zone, if you get another piece of property, we can add it to that zone, but create that zone, rather than, I'm just concerned saying a special permit for a residential house next door to you, if somebody has less than 50 acres, they can put a campsite. That's not going to work. That doesn't work for me. But clearly, we don't want to interrupt with it, what Jennifer's doing, and give her the most flexibility without even the, the dealing with this. And we know it's coming from her, we know it's permitted, we don't have to worry about setbacks, we don't have to worry about a whole bunch of things, because it's controlled.
But a campsite's not allowed under, under our zoning.
I'm just saying, we can create that zone, create a zone that allows for campsites.
And again, that, that would be something, you know, a further discussion in the future. Right now, I mean, I, I'm completely comfortable with the special permitting aspect of it, at least for that part.
Paul, where did the language for commercial campsite, starting at 75 acres in area, come from?
I did, I did some research and pulled it from a few other towns nearby, pulled that definition together.
Yeah, I guess, to a point, to a level of Orin's point, kind of, to me, the size of a commercial campsite isn't necessarily a relevant, a relevant feature. It's almost kind of the, being operated for profit?
We're not allowing it.
But we're not allowing it. In effect, I should mention, when we met with Finance Committee last week, they recommended, I'll put that in the, here, that we should add amusement park and commercial campsite to the use table, and put no across the board for all of the zoning districts.
Yeah, this specifies that it's not including amusement parks and commercial campsites.
Right, but we're defining commercial campsite as something that's not less than 75 acres in area. So there's a gray area below that.
Well, not really, but this is, again, this is passive recreation.
Yeah.
I mean, this is kids going out camping, I mean, there's Jen, will tell you, often, most of the people who apply are parents going out with their kids, this isn't...
I'm being, I'm just being the cynic.
I know, and I just go, this is a, this is an incredibly low-intensity use.
Oh, I agree.
And I, I just think this is a fairly straightforward, we, we don't have agricultural zoning here. We only have five zoning, five, six zoning districts to include with it. We're trying to make sure that, that the campers who are, for, you know, people out, going out camping, that we can at least say, it meets our zoning bylaw, that they can do it, because somebody could come across and say, that's an illegal use, the zoning doesn't allow it right now. And I just get back to, it's camping.
Oh, I, I agree. I guess, I almost, by putting the 75 acres as the limiting factor for a commercial campsite, anything less than 75 acres in area, somebody would, somebody could conceivably read as, it's not a commercial, if it's 74.99 acres...
But you're also not including the second part of that sentence. I mean, in, the 75 acres in an area that is used by transient campers in a unit that is portable structures, sheltered vehicle, that, that completely changes.
If you changed and to or, then yes.
Why would you change it to or?
And means that it needs to be 75 acres and being used in that manner. I guess, if somebody said something 74.99 acres, then technically, it wouldn't meet this definition of a commercial campsite.
Right, but that doesn't mean it would automatically become a passive recreational site.
But it, and it also, but it would.
Well, you still, but if you still have things like, you know, convenience stores and food services, that's not a passive.
Right.
And, and again, this is, you're still approving it as a special permit, even the passive, so you have the opportunities to approve it or condition it.
If I've got 30 acres, and I want to let people come in there, use the campsites and park out and that, under this, I can, it's not deemed to be a commercial campsite, even though it, I'm using it commercially. And if I have a, an R80 house, and the guy next to me has a five acres or 10 acres, and he wants to let people camp on it, this allows him to do it, with a special permit, but it's still starting out allowing, it's allowed use.
It allows him to, to apply to use it.
Can I...
It allows you to apply for it, but you'd still, the applicant would still have to demonstrate that they're not a commercial operation.
Can I make a suggestion to the wording for a commercial campsite?
Changing this is not, is not approving these things in advance. I think that's, that's some confusion here.
Right, I know. I would recommend changing the wording of, under, the definition of commercial campsite to be a commercial facility, skip the size definition, that is used by transient campers in a unit that is a portable structure, blah, 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 blah.
I agree with that. I think the 75 acres can, some people are going to leverage that hard number, just take it out.
Yeah, take the number out, and then, yeah.
Yeah, it's a, it's a commercial camping, yeah, it's not.
So how do you allow camping on, on one of the conservation properties?
It's not commercial. It's not being, it's not a commercial facility.
Commercial is simply, is in the definite, is in the title, but it doesn't say anything about, you know, it having to be commercial.
I would say add it, the first sentence be a commercial facility that is used by, so that way, it's...
Paul, quick question. If we step back one page, I just was curious, as kind of a newbie here, can you explain a little bit the impact of removing campsite from commercial uses and adding in these passive outdoor recreational under open space and agricultural recreation uses? Seems that we're removing campsite from commercial uses altogether, right? In Article 16 at the bottom there?
Because it's...
And then we're adding in, in this other recreational uses section at the bottom of the use there, commercial campsite, so it kind of ties that definition to a different section for use?
Right.
Can you explain kind of the impact of that by not having it in the commercial use area?
Well, the, the commercial use is just grouping activities by a use category, so I don't think it has a, an actual implication.
Okay.
Because, again, camping is, you know, when you think about it at its heart, it's really about open space and recreation. I think, because we didn't define it, the code, the bylaw doesn't define what we meant by campsite, but we did put it under commercial, we were probably thinking these bigger commercial activities.
Right, but on here, we identify what a commercial campsite is, and then under recreational uses, we say, but not including amusement parks and commercial campsites.
Right.
We define it, and then we say, those aren't, so we're only defining it not...
But what we're saying is they're not considered passive recreational uses.
So maybe we keep the striked-out part and say, commercial campsite, to match the definition.
Sounds like the FinCom one, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, no, you're right, Kevin. No, no, exactly.
So they're just saying, bring back, you know, commercial campsite and amusement park. We would put those under commercial.
Right.
And say no.
Because nowhere in the post-proposal does it say what is allowed for a commercial campsite. Doesn't say it anywhere.
Right, that, right.
Yeah, so...
So it's almost at the, the third use table in the article, instead of striking out campsite, it should be...
Commercial campsite.
Replace with commercial campsite, and then I don't know necessarily what the recommendation is.
You want to keep a line of no's, yeah, unless you want...
Yeah, so those two that are not, that are not included, yeah, and keep that in there under commercial.
Under commercial?
So it would be amusement park and commercial campsites, and then no across, right? If that's what you're...
Well, that's kind of the question.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think that's...
So that's saying that the commercial, that commercial campsites have no...
Add, make it commercial campsite and keep as no everywhere, just like it is...
For me, I think it does.
There's no commercial campsites.
Yeah.
In any zoning...
Rather than deleting it from the use table, in the commercial section, where it says no everywhere, anywhere.
But it allows...
Just change, match up the definition to commercial campsite, and keep it as no's.
So keep that.
And also add...
Then, yeah.
Right, so we'll keep, we'll add commercial campsite, and put that as no's across the board, as well as amusement parks.
And then strike the whole description paragraphs too, for both of those, we don't need those, the two descriptions that the link, the paragraphs...
I want to keep the descriptions.
But the way it's defined without an area would also include what Jennifer's dealing with, which is a lot...
A, a commercial facility.
It could be simplified, right?
Well, what's commercial? Do we charge for, do we charge? Is there a charge that we attribute to them, for using those sites?
There might be a fee for a campsite.
When does it become commercial? Unless you want to exclude, exclude out of here, sites controlled by conservation or owned by the town, something like that?
This isn't an article, right?
No, 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 but that's where it's seen.
Scott, to your point, on the, on the last page of the handout that we got, that outlines what you were just saying. But it wasn't actually in the article.
Oh, it's not in the article.
Yeah, it's not in the article, but it's actually on there, so that's...
But that, I mean, again, that's, that's, to look at that, no offense, Paul, but that's dangerous. The only thing that you can look at is the actual warrant. The warrant is divert by definition, a warning to people what's going to be discussed.
Right.
Amusement parks is not going to be discussed, other than in terms of definitions of this. There's no, there's no warning that amusement parks are going to be discussed, other than defining it. I mean, I'm not saying it shouldn't be discussed, but if it's going to be discussed, there has to be a new warrant, a new article on a new town meeting warrant.
I was just putting out there that that's what FinCom was recommending.
But they, they can't, I mean, unless, we're not going to have a special town meeting at some future point and include it, but we're limited to the four corners of the warrant.
Can I ask one, one question in, in regard to the passive outdoor and the no in industrial? Does that impact at all what Blue Star is proposing for those last two lots, where they wanted to do that path down to the Canoe River?
No.
That wouldn't be considered a passive recreational area? It just would be open space?
It's an open space.
Okay. I was just curious if that...
Right, it's not programmed.
...fall under the general category or not.
So Joe, what you were saying is just take out amusement parks altogether?
No, I wasn't.
On the definition, or, well, in the article?
I think we can...
No, 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 I'm, in the article, I mean, I understand, and I...
The article does talk about amusement parks in the use chart in this context.
And then it has the definition.
I mean, I understand why it did it. There's also a, a school of thoughts that says, I mean, we don't, we don't define nuclear power plants, we don't define a whole host of things, and the school of thought is, unless it's allowed in a zoning bylaw, it's not allowed. So there's, there's an argument that can be made that, right now, amusement parks aren't addressed in the bylaw, so we don't have to worry about them, and therefore don't have to define them. But where you, you try to distinguish in terms of this passive campsite thing, that we're not talking about amusement park, then you're going to have, since you've referenced it in the, in the use table, you're going to have to define it.
So do we take the reference out in the use table?
I don't know.
So is the, I guess no one drafted it here, so we can't ask the question.
Well, we can recommend to take that out, I mean, that's...
But I think if it's, if I think, my opinion is, if we take out but not including amusement parks and commercial campsites, you need that other table that's not in the warrant. If that's their intention by adding that in there.
I think that's their intention, yeah.
So I'm confused now. Why don't we just change the word campsite to commercial campsite, leave it as all no in the existing chart, and then just approve, you know, non-commercial campsites as, as requested there, special permit and no in industrial, and to leave it at that as a...
I think the challenge comes to the next article, where they define amusement park to commercial campsite. Amusement park is then defined...
Well, we can, if we take out amusement park... Well, we can, if we take out amusement park in the table, we can take out the definition.
It doesn't, it's in the warrant. I mean, I almost feel like it's not out of, my feeling is it's not outside the bounds of what could be expected given the warrant.
Taking it out is not the.
Why do we need that?
Because we're defining, we're adding that amusement parks aren't allowed in this use.
It's not discussion.
I don't think it's outside the, the bounds in terms of what people might expect to discuss to see it further defined in the use table.
Well, we can simply strike it from the use table and, and the definition.
So circle.
And then, and then add the, I'm sorry, and then add the, add it back in, the "commercial campsites" and then no across the board. So as Joe was saying, not to get into the weeds of it of explaining everything and detailing everything, we can just.
Well, we can, we don't, this article, I didn't realize that this whole article is just defining commercial campsites and, I didn't even know there was all articles for that. Like, why do we just not act on that or, or reject it and don't even move it at the town meeting? Do we need it?
I, I think if, if, again, I didn't write this, but I think if you're going to, Article sixteen or eight, whatever it is.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. If you're going to mention what you're not including, i.e. amusement parks and commercial campsites, then you have to define them. I'm almost of the, of the position that we change this to say passive outdoor recreational uses such as parks, beaches, picnics, groves, camping and other similar non-commercial uses and end it there.
Yeah.
And then, one seventy-five, four point four, just eliminate that because campsites are.
Get back to the original.
And then you can deli, then you can remove.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, that tightens it up there.
Yeah, okay. The, the non-commercial is modifying use, other uses, other similar non-commercial uses. Is that going back to camping?
And then we go with one seventy-five, four point four.
And that can still be removed.
Rather than create confusion, go with it as it is. We're gonna eliminate campsite altogether. We're gonna allow camping by virtue of the use table's special permit, rather than confuse things. So we don't, you can do it on special permit, but down below, "campsite" is no. That's contradictory. So if we eliminate that last section, what's proposed at one seventy-five, four point four, in other words, go ahead and do this.
The only rare place you find camping is passive outdoor recreational use.
Right, but.
Yeah.
Campsite will no longer exist in our zoning bylaws and then forget the definitions altogether under the next article.
So stop it right under the.
No, we'll go with this as proposed except for, but we'll scratch this language, "but not including amusement parks and commercial campsites" and put "and other similar non-commercial uses."
And then keep the strike through of campsite and.
Right, eliminate that because it's.
And then the definitions will be removed.
You can't have a campsite if you're gonna allow people to camp.
That makes, that makes more sense.
Definitions?
Yep.
Remove them.
It's gone.
Remove definitions.
Yep.
Okay.
It's an elegant solution, I think.
So just have the FinCom not vote on it. They won't move it. If it still has to be in the warrant, because it still has to be in the warrant.
Yeah, but then they don't have.
So they ju, they just don't move on it. They don't move the article and nobody will vote on it, so just, I don't know how they, how you let them know, but.
Is that.
We're briefing them beforehand.
Because it's two different articles?
Yeah.
It's two correct, there's a definitions article and then the use table, so it's a different article.
Yeah. Okay.
Do we know who proposed the original language? Was there a specific reason why maybe amusement parks was called out?
Yeah, because we wanted to make it clear that, we wanted to, we felt there might be a loophole there, so that's why we felt it was important to talk about these commercial types of uses, and other communities had done that as well. So that's why we wanted to just bring it up, that.
I think that, that fixes it by saying, um, non.
Passive outdoor, non-commercial recreational uses such as, put the non-commercial up on top, because you want the non-commercial to relate to all of those.
I, I think the wording that Joe had was, was fine.
It, but it don't, the non-commercial is only relating to other similar uses. If you want it to relate to all of them, if you put.
And other non-commercial, and other similar non-commercial uses.
Implying that all of them are non-commercial.
Right, but I, I think it works maybe even better as you're proposing, Aaron, passive.
Outdoor.
Outdoor, non-commercial uses.
Recreational uses.
Right, so that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, you got that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board?
I guess there was one abutters note in our package that I feel like I just have to, should mention in specific, general, just in terms of, Jennifer, you mentioned that they have to notify fire if they're going to have a campsite and is that, is that, how has that process generally worked? Do you feel it's generally been effective? Are people actually notifying people when they're supposed to, et cetera?
As far as I know, they are notifying police and fire when they go out for the property.
Is there maybe a way that we could work like a note, when you get an application, you notify them? Is that a?
Uh.
We'll be through the special permit.
Well, the special permit would cover the site, I assume, not the specific like day that somebody's bringing their kid camping. So it's not gonna, that would be my understanding.
Correct. Right now, they're required to send that information to police and fire. But we, there's no reason why we can't revise our application form and go over it with police and fire and figure out how to make sure that it gets through. But as far as I know, everybody is notifying police and fire the way they're supposed to.
Not necessarily a totally formal meeting, just in terms of, I guess I'm gonna continue to be the cynic today, but not trusting people to, whether, oh, I forgot, or I'm not gonna bother, or whatever.
I think actually having a bylaw in place that includes campsites might, now people have to comply with something. Whereas currently, there is no bylaws, it's not, it's not allowed, so if I want to, you know, I might circum, I might bypass.
Marty Renegade, I may as well just be a complete renegade.
Process and not notify anyone. At least now it's in the bylaws, so it might encourage more compliance.
I just kind of view it, I view it on kind of the same wavelength as somebody burning yard debris in their backyard, kind of. You're supposed to tell the fire department when you do it, but pretty sure people do it without doing it anyway, even if they, you know. And that's, not trying to kind of remake the wheel here, I just feel like some kind of.
I don't think there's anything we can add to this.
Not this specifically, but just a discussion in relation to the, the ultimate use is a, yeah.
Well, I think there's gonna be special permits on each one of these sites that we want to allow these passive use. And Jennifer's requirements for issuing the permit.
It's called a camping application right now, but we'll just change the.
We would specify, you know, Jennifer would give us what guidelines and, and requirements that she has. And then we would incorporate that if, if we're in agreement to the special permit for that site.
Yeah, something, yeah. Pretty simple, it's just copying the fire chief when an application's sent out or something like that.
Well, I think before I want to.
Well, that would be, that would be part of the special permit.
Yeah, we, we can, yeah, okay.
For our purposes tonight, I mean, that's not.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board, questions?
I just, I think you have other abutters here who would like to speak.
So I'll turn it over to the audience. Anyone in the audience would like to, please?
Once again, I'm Ellen Valentine. I live at seventy-one Northwestern Street. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. I feel I have a very important matter to discuss in regards to camping and changing the zoning to passive recreational camping that includes fires. About a year ago in February two thousand eighteen, I got wind that some of the abutters were invited to a meeting at the Conservation Department. There were actually two meetings. My husband and I attended the second one along with Arthur Stenford and Mary Ellen Stenford that live at seventy-three Northwestern Street. So we were kind of surprised that they wanted to allow camping. We had always lived next door to the Girl Scouts who camped out there safely, with one exception when the Boy Scouts lit, lit the woods on fire in the sixties. And I remember being about seven years old and seeing the, the, the smoke and being really fearful that it's gonna come to my parents' farm. Now, the farm is at sixty-seven Northwestern Street. It is the largest abutter of both the Rose Farm and Camp Edith Reed. It also abuts the YMCA camp. So we asked a lot of questions. We said, what about, you know, the Girl Scouts, we're, we've always been pleased with them. We were very pleased that the town bought the land from them. I'm an avid supporter of conservation. My husband and I are bringing back my great-grandfather's farm as a completely organic farm, so we want to really preserve nature and give that opportunity for people to buy produce and eggs from the farm that are really clean. So over the years, having lived here and as a kid, constantly was outside playing on the Rose Farm area. We would go out to the Girl Scout camp and it was, it was beautiful. But when they first acquired Rose Farm, I was about seven, and I can remember they were very enthusiastic. They put picnic tables out there and salt licks for the deer and within a matter of months, everything was destroyed. Kids started going out there and they started drinking, they started fires, and nothing was done until a lot of the neighbors complained and they finally had to put a gate up in front of the pathway that went back. They actually had made the driveway and cleared out a parking lot in the first field, and that just got overgrown. They put the gate up, but for years, there was still parties out there. Everything that was built out there, including bridges, docks at the YMCA camp, picnic tables were added to the island, everything was destroyed. The Girl Scout camp has had trespassing. Yesterday, we met with Jennifer Carlino, Arthur, my husband, and David Dine, who lives and actually was once a caretaker at the, the Girl Scout camp for years with his mom. She told us that, you know, there, there had been vandalism at the lodge this summer and they put cameras up to catch the kids that did, did it. And they had come in from the Y camp. We are greatly concerned to the point that I called Chief Schleicher and I asked him, what do you think about having campfires back there? Because it's not just the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. They are insured, they're versed in fire safety, CPR, all the safety things. We don't mind that at all. But if we change passive recreation, the zoning, to allowing camping for anyone over twenty-one, even with a special permit, we're gonna have issues of not only twenty-one-year-olds being considered adults, and we all know twenty-one-year-olds, when they get their license to drink, there'll be alcohol on the premises, whether it's prohibited or not. And we're also afraid that even though families will go out there and do everything in order, they'll get permits, they'll do it all well. There'll be kids, once this gets wind, because so many people don't even know that we bought this property. If kids get wind of it, they'll be out there just like they were at Rose Farm. So we asked Jennifer, is there any way that we could require that there be a caretaker to the property as the Girl Scouts had? And the house that was torn down was a caretaker's house, and he walked the property all the time. He was in charge of the gate and who he let in was monitored. We've had a lot of problems being in the center of all this with trespassing. There's been a lot of motorized vehicles, two-wheelers, four-wheelers, over the years. Off-road vehicles have totally destroyed some of the fields, especially up by the Somney School. So I've been out there, my husband's been out there, we've told the kids, you know, you're not authorized to come out here, it's illegal, and they just keep doing it. So things have slowed down in that capacity, but we're really concerned that the, the Edith Reed area will also be damaged. But in Jennifer's defense, there is no budget for a caretaker. She told us there was only four thousand dollars to cover expenses for all of the conservation properties, and now we have, is it six or seven? Conservation properties. Four thousand dollars is woefully inadequate to cover monitoring these properties properly. So Chief Schleicher said that we are woefully unprepared to have camping out there. So I decided that with some neighbors, we were gonna pass a petition. I'd like to redo what the petition says. "We, the following registered voters of the town of Norton, have signed this petition to request that in order for zoning to be changed to allow campfires within the boundaries of the Edith Reed Conservation Area and others," because we didn't realize this would encompass all of them. "There must be a caretaker supervisor on the premises to oversee and enforce safety issues such as fire containment, alcohol use, which is prohibited, prevention of vandalism, and the rules of passive recreation activities as outlined in the conservation policy for the town of Norton. Exception is the Boy and Girl Scouts of America groups who have had, have have adult supervisors trained in fire safety and their own insurance coverage in the event of mishap. There is currently no provision in the conservation commissions, we put capital, which is only for improvements, but in their budget for a caretaker salary." Every person that I encountered, and I have close to eighty signatures with petitions still circulating, were horrified that we would allow camping with fires, horrified. And everybody said, that's insane, the kids will be out there drinking, that's crazy, this is crazy, why do they even want camping? If people want camping, they can go to a commercial campsite, and do you know any commercial campsite that does not have supervision? None of them do. And we're really worried about what's gonna happen. Because even when the scouts can light a fire and set the woods on fire with all the precautions, what's gonna happen? When people sneak in or even families, there's just, there's no supervision. Now, the capital budget of twenty-five thousand is only for the improvement of the lodge. There's all even vandalism there. So with such a small budget of four thousand dollars, I fear that a lot of that money is just gonna go to repairs all the time, and then other things will suffer. So we have a lot of support for the fact that we really need to consider this zoning change. We also asked Jennifer, is it possible that we could allow the scouts and not allow the average town person to go in there? Is there any way to make this change so that it's only for insured groups such as the scouts? We, we asked who would be cleaning up the lodge, how are we gonna monitor people taking their trash out? How are we gonna monitor who cleans the bathrooms that are being renovated? She said that we hope that the campers, we'll require them to take the trash out, and we might have to ask them to clean the bathrooms. I think you know that that's not always gonna work. A lot of people are not terribly fastidious and will not take the time to do that. So if you could please consider the dangers of this, like I said, we're still circulating petitions. We'll present that at town meeting when the vote comes up to change to passive. But I just want you to really think about this. I don't think it's been thought through carefully, and all of the people that signed these petitions absolutely support that there'll be a caretaker. It's essential if this is gonna happen on any conservation property, not just. I mean, there's huge abutters. I have a map here if you'd like to see. Anna Way, in fact, Anna Precourt was here from Walker Street. She abuts Skinner's Bridge and the river, and she said, just walk to the edge of her property, there's hypodermic needles, there's used prophylactics, there's even underwear she finds out there. If that's happening in broad daylight, it's Skinner's Bridge, what's gonna happen out in the woods when nobody has access out there to view? So I just, please consider this when you, when you make this change. Okay, thank you. If you have any questions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I fully understand, I hear what you're saying, and maybe I'm being naive. The reality is that's going on now.
Somewhat.
And maybe my naivete is coming in. And maybe my naivete is coming in by hoping that people who apply for a permit, give their name and are now deemed responsible for what goes on while they're using that permit, that they'll be responsible. And that is, I mean, they're not the caretaker, but those are the adult eyes that will be preventing what's going on now from going on while they're paying, you know, even a nominal fee of 10 bucks and they've got their family pitched a tent and they're enjoying the property. Now we've got a responsible set of adults, hopefully, that can prevent what's going on now with absolutely no supervision. I mean, you know, kids are kids and we were all kids at one point and I wouldn't want to be held responsible for everything I did as a kid. But there was, if there's just woods and no one there who is a responsible adult, that's going to happen as it's been happening. I'm just wondering if we have a system that allows responsible adults to use the site, they're going to be the first eyes that say, hey, you've got, you know, then, I don't expect them to be enforcing it, but they pick up their cellphone and call the police and say, hey, we've got kids down here that are doing whatever. I mean, isn't that a better situation than what we have now?
But will they know if those groups have a permit? They'd have to ask them, do you have a permit to be here? There's also multiple platform areas, so...
But, I mean, you, the way you could do it, and again, I don't know physically the way the property is going to be set up, but you can have a little post that, you know, you put your permit on the post and if there's no posting on that post, then, you know, they don't have a permit. Plus, if, you know, they're out there drinking and raising cane at 2:00 in the morning, you've got someone who's saying, hey, I paid to be here and I've got my, you know, seven-year-old kid and I don't want them subjected to this. They pick up the phone and say, hey, police, there's someone down here that even if they get a permit, is acting irrationally. I'm just wondering if that's not a better situation than just letting what's been going on continue to go on.
But what about the situation where there are no responsibly, responsible families out there that night and then you have kids out there that no one can report and no one's watching?
But that's what's going on now.
To some degree, but don't we want to better that? Because we don't want a forest fire and we don't want a sexual assault or we don't want vandalism.
We're, we're on the same page. I'm just hoping that by having a process that allows for responsible adults to apply for a permit, that we at least know who is there and it was, you know, Joe Fernandes pulled a permit and the next day the place is trashed. Well, you know, hey, Joe Fernandes, what happened here? Well...
But he could also be held responsible for something he didn't do if kids snuck in in the back and he would be accused. So that's a risk to the camper, too.
Right. It is, but then it's incumbent on Joe Fernandes to say, hey, police, it's, you know, 2:00 AM and there are, you know, 15 teenagers out here drinking or whatever it is they're doing. I don't know, I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate here, but it seems to me that what we've got now isn't ideal. And beyond that, we've now acquired property that I think, you know, people ought to be able to use, but use it responsibly.
Well, all the people that I talked to said, it's perfectly fine that we are able to use it for walking and biking and fishing and bird watching. Like, people were completely satisfied with that. And most people were very happy that we bought it as conservation land just for those reasons. That was enough. That justified the expense, which I think was reasonable even, you know, for that kind of property. It's beautiful. But we just really want to take care of it. And all of us that have lived along there, and we have people three and four generations here, we've watched all the changes and, and we've been protective of it. You know, people go out on the street and they'll pick up trash out there and they'll, they'll tell kids to get off their bikes and leave. And, you know, recently, the kids were out there on their bikes, motorbikes, and a neighbor down the street called the police and they hauled them off. That's the first time that's happened in a long time. So hopefully, people are waking up to the value of that property. But just please consider this. This is very scary for the residents, very scary. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Bill Sanford for Anna Way. Little concerned about the open burning as it is. I'm a runner in town. You can't go out April, May, I stop now, April 1st, the open burning. But if we're going to have open burning all summer back there, that's my neighborhood, that's where I run. It's bad enough now. I mean, you go out in March, people are burning. They burn when they're not supposed to be burning. You know, all over town. The roads are bad enough, we only have a few sidewalks. At least Anna Way and the back roads there have some sidewalks. But, I mean, come on, we're trying to improve the town, not make it worse. You go down by the Bourne Bridge, the campsite's down there in the summertime, you can't even breathe, the smoke's so thick. You're going to do that to Norton? It's insane. There is going to be open burning all summer? Is that what you're saying? That's, I take it, when this is going to be open? And that's people camp in the summer?
Mr. Chairman?
I mean, it's the quality of life. I mean, we live there. We have to breathe there. And when my next-door neighbor tells me I have a permit, I can burn whatever I want, I can't go into my yard unless I call the fire department.
Is the, so with the article, is the recommendation from both of you to eliminate the ability to have a campfire on the site? Is that pretty much the gist of what you're requesting?
That would be my concern. I mean, you know, I can, I can go next door to you and start a campfire and all summer long and burn it every night and it's wonderful, but...
How does that affect Jennifer, your, our use, the use of those facilities that you control, the absence of burning fires?
Well, your article's about camping, right? So would the campfire be part of the special permit discussion?
Yeah, that would be.
So, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you. I've worked very hard to get that land and all land in town and to maintain it. I don't want it destroyed either.
I'm not talking about destroying it. I'm saying it's our quality of life in town. I mean...
Can you go to the...
We do have designated campfire pits, right? So the camping has to be in an approved, the fire has to be in an approved location. And I think most people who go camping do enjoy having a small campfire for cooking and smores and things like that. I mean, Norton isn't exactly the Mecca for camping, so there's not that many people who are camping and having campfires on our property anyway. We purchased the Edith Reed, the Camp Edith Reed, so that we could continue having camping, not just for scouts, but, you know, we can't discriminate against people because they're not scouts. So it is open public property and as long as they have a permit and they're following the requirements of the permit and leaving their contact information, I just choose to believe people are responsible enough to, to do that properly.
Do you live close to the camp?
I do not, but I don't know that I...
Do you want to be breathing the smoke?
This shouldn't, this shouldn't be a debate back in, no, hold on, hold on a second.
I'm just saying, this is our property. We are going to have to deal with this. We're going to have to have the smoke all summer long that these people are going to be having campfires. We don't know how many. You don't know how, what you're going to do with this camp. It could be like the scenic pot at the canal and it's going to be smoke everywhere and it's going to destroy our properties.
Hasn't that been the case?
I mean, the open burning from January till May is ridiculous. So you should eliminate that, too. The neighbors are horrible about it.
So the article on the, that we're going through here, that would go through a special permit. And right now, as, as I understand it, there's already campfires. So do you expect a major change in, in the amount of people coming and more campfires?
Yeah, that was going to be my question, Jennifer. Do you have an idea of how many people camp at any one of these given places a summer? Do you have, like, just an idea? I know I'm probably asking you for stats, but do you have just like...
If there's more than 10 camping permits a year, that, that's quite a bit. I would expect that scouts who've been camping at Camp Edith Reed and Boy Scouts would probably have more of an interest and there would be a bit of an uptake in camping. But more than one group a weekend?
It seems to me the major problem is going to be with people that are going that aren't applying for permits and that aren't seeking out, I, I think denying this or saying no to this would be not helping that situation at all. And if you don't expect a huge uptick in, in additional campers, I don't, I personally, I don't feel it's unreasonable. But I do understand your point as far as the campfires.
So you have no problem with the open fires all summer?
It, it all depends. I mean, if, if they're going on now, I mean, I'm speaking personally. If what's going on now is, is overwhelming, then that's a whole different story.
Campfire is no different than someone burning a wood stove.
Yeah.
Again, I just...
Or a charcoal grill.
It's a little duckling with a charcoal grill. It's not going to be going all day.
Rod fires is one thing, but someone, you know...
I'm concerned that this is going to become more than just a small, 10-people site. It's going to become a commercial camping ground and it's going to be much more than what you're saying.
Well, we specifically, we specifically outlined that we're, commercial campgrounds aren't going to be part of this. So this, we were very specific about that.
Mr. Chairman, we, my, my daughter and my sons as tag-alongs spent many years at Edith Reed in the Girl Scout camp. And, you know, my sense is there was a lot of open, open campsite fires going on back then with the, with the Girl Scouts for, you know, how long more, much more than I do. So I don't think, you know, that's part of the history of the property. But, you know, from a legal perspective, technical perspective, all of those years that the Girl Scouts operated at that site, without a bylaw to allow camp sites in Norton, they were basically doing that unlawfully. So this article will allow compliance and a process with a permitting process with people that'll be accountable because they'll have to come before us and, you know, give their names and go through the conditions that we outline. And that could be no fires after whatever, you know, midnight or whatever the case may be.
And if, and if, my personal, my personal thought on this would be is if, you know, this does, this does pass and you see 50 people every weekend coming and applying for permits, then that's a whole nother conversation, but I, I don't think that'll happen. And I do, I, I do like the idea of, of a caretaker, if that were to be something that's, like I said, you know, you're, you're getting multiple applications above and beyond what you expect. That's something that the town would have to pass. But I mean, for this, for this use, I don't, I don't think...
And one other thing, a lot of your discussions and your concerns, I would encourage you to bring them up to the selectmen as well.
Yeah.
Because a lot of it comes to protection, fire protection, police enforcement, that kind of thing, which really falls on their purview. We're just, you know, approving articles. And I think this article really needs to be approved because we don't have one right now that stipulates anybody can do whatever they want on any land. Now we're providing a permitting process if they want to camp anywhere and they have to come before us in a public session, you know, make themselves visible, put their name on record, that they're going to be responsible for whatever dates and times they're going to be there. So right now, we don't have anything like that. But as far as enforcement and protection of land, you should really voice your concerns to the selectmen as well.
Okay, we'll do that. Perhaps I'll write them a letter initially and try and speak to them. Just one...
Do you want to come up to the...
Oh, sure. One more.
Again, funding, funding for somebody like a caretaker, I mean, that's not anything that we can do here as a board, so...
Right. But to suggest it to the selectmen, yeah, I think it's essential. And Jennifer needs help, she doesn't even have a full-time secretary. And she could use an assistant to help, you know, just basically view these sites on a weekly basis and see what's going on out there. But just in reference to my discussion with Chief Schleicher, he said that technically right now, and I think this came up at our meeting, Jennifer, we realized that even the scouts, all these years, were having fires illegally out there because it's zoned for no campsite. And Chief Schleicher told me that even a fire pit, I said, what about fire pits in people's yards? Technically, you can't even set up a pup tent in your own yard under all the zoning right now. And you are not allowed to have a fire pit, an open fire, unless you are cooking food on it. Other, he's, he's been called to put fires out and unless the people are cooking, he can't stop that. He puts out a fire if it's just for viewing. So those are the, so we've been in violation all these years with the scouts, even though they've been very good. So something has to be done so that, you know, people can have a little pit fire in their yard if they want. But just with the camping thing, we're just worried about non-monitoring in groups that will go out there and kind of wreak havoc. So, okay, thank you.
Again, my opinion on this is, is right now, it's not being monitored at all. So, so with this, it would start to put a little bit of monitoring in place. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I, I had one thing, too, Jennifer. I was thinking that you said that there's designated, like, campfire areas. Then it'd be good to know, maybe if we're assisting in the permitting, how many at each location, so we never go over that number, that there is a certain designated number that's allowed. You know, like, if there's only five places, then there will never be more than five permits. And at that point, we could notify fire and police, these are the five people who should be on property. If you get any calls from any of the neighbors, these are the only people who've been allowed access. So I think we could work on some coordination, knowing what the capability of each location is, too. So just more food for thought as we kind of work through this.
The other thing, this also applies to properties that Jennifer isn't controlling.
Right.
So perhaps we, we get some of the guidelines you use, so we can make sure to impose them in our special permits as they may be applicable.
Absolutely.
Insurance or whatever it is. So if we get a sense of what you, what you're using now, we can apply that to the, the properties that aren't under your control.
Come on up.
Yep. Just your name and address for the record.
871 North Worcester. Again, going to the selectmen, as you suggested, would that be the approach? Because they have no source of fire protection, suppressing a fire that gets out of control and we as abutters are very concerned about that. Pine groves go up like gasoline and it could be detrimental to the abutting properties. And I agree, we need to get, I think we need to go to the selectmen to get, have eyes on this property. The posting of, you know, the permit process is a great idea. However, you don't have a caretaker to really oversee, you know, the honest and dishonest people. And that's, again, you know, some kind of a follow-up or somebody that would take a daily walk through there to make sure everybody's compliant to their permit would be something that we'd really like to see. And I know you'd have to budget for that, so we are going to move forward with that on your suggestion to go to the selectmen. I just wanted to voice that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the selectmen own the land when it was transferred over from, when the town purchased it? Are they the custodial, you know, owners of the, of the Edith Reed property right now, Jennifer?
No, it's conservation property.
Okay.
The only ones that we're, people are typically camping are the Gertrude Cornish Town Forest on Plain Street and the smaller, the medium-sized island in Norton Reservoir. Otherwise, all the camping has been on conservation property.
You said there's...
I wasn't expecting that either. You're right, that's Venus Island.
You said there's sites with, with fire pits now, or areas for fires now? Are those maintained at all?
I think there's two or three on the property. That's it.
And are, are they maintained or do, does anyone go out and take care of them at all?
Before we purchased the property, the Girl Scout, the Girl Scouts stopped using the land for camping for at least two years before that. So as far as I know, there haven't been any fires in there since then.
Okay. Yeah, because that's important. I mean, allowing people to have fires, the area should be cleaned up.
It needs to be a designated location and, I mean, we'll probably have to restack.
Yeah.
We'll have to restack the, the cinder blocks that are around there. And we have a, a community service day on Founder's Day in the morning if people want to join us.
So would, maybe would it be better for them to meet with your group, the Conservation Commission, before they meet with the selectmen, do you think, to express what they've expressed tonight or...
You can do either. Yeah, I mean, you can certainly do that. I just need to have your request in writing so I can put you on an agenda. That's all, it's not, I mean, it's better if you're scheduled so I can put you up first, otherwise you have to wait till the end of the meeting.
Yeah, at first, to me, it would be an issue of funding and then from there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they bring up excellent points. I'm not, there's no ill will there. I mean, I don't want the property destroyed either and, yeah, I don't have the funds or the staffing for any kind of caretaker. That would certainly be helpful, but I just don't have that.
Well, thankful to Jennifer's grant-writing ability and her persistence to acquire the land in the first place. It could be owned by anybody right now, a private ownership, any developer, you know, if it wasn't for her, we wouldn't have any control over it.
There's only a few little lots on that property in 46 acres because of the 100-year floodway and the corals and the swamps. It's just, it's not...
Yeah. It's still beautiful and we...
Yeah. It's still beautiful, and, I mean, it costs money to buy the land, and you come up with the funding through your grant writing.
It's actually a garden.
Anybody could have bought it, yeah.
It's a garden, but it's really, really is beautiful.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. My point is, at least, we still have control of the property under the town. That very well could not have been the case. You could be voicing your concerns to somebody very random who has no association with the town.
Okay. Anything further from the audience? Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning board recommend Article 16 with a, as printed, with the following change, with under 175-43, that under principal uses, the language read, passive, outdoor, non-commercial, recreational uses such as parks, comma, beach, beaches, comma, picnic groves, comma, camping and other similar uses, period.
I'll second.
Deletion of...
No, we want that.
We're keeping that.
We want to delete campsite so that...
And we're going to delete the definitions?
Yeah.
Do you motion to delete this?
No, it's going to stay, it's going to stay as printed, which will result in campsite being eliminated.
And then...
That's a separate article?
Okay.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, well, the educational and religious facilities is part of that campsite, too, so we have to include...
Well, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. But the whole, the whole article is, I moved the whole article as printed, except for that one change.
Okay. So we have a motion. Is that, do you still second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? It passes?
Mr. Chairman.
So now we have...
Article 17, I move that Article 17 be approved as printed. Excuse me, that Article 17 be recommended as printed.
Which one, 17?
The next one. And it does reinforce, rather than deal with negative motions, I want my motion to be defeated.
Oh, okay.
Got it, okay.
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
I'm thinking, we have to...
We did that once, yeah.
You're right, Joe, because we have done that in the past, and that got really confusing. We had, like, the double negative going on, right? Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I understand.
I'll second.
Okay, so this is to...
To recommend it, yeah.
To recommend Article 17 as written.
Right.
So a yes vote would be to let it go through as written, a no vote would be to not.
Let it die.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We don't have to go down the line, do we? That was unanimous? Okay.
Yeah.
Motion will not, the article will not go forward.
Okay.
So we...
Have we done everything?
Yeah. So we thought this was going to be a light, a lighter evening, so we were going to go through the handbook, but seeing as how it's after 10 o'clock, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and we can add this to the next light day.
How's it looking as we're moving forward near fall with the next?
The next meeting will be the June 4th, so we will be seeing the Cumberland Farms application coming in.
Is that a special permit application?
Special permit and site plan. Special permit because of the gas station and, I believe, because of the signs. Yeah, there's an electronic message center sign. So, and we are currently getting peer review underway, are under contract for stormwater and for traffic.
Chairman, with regard to the handbook, how do we want to be approaching this? I mean, do we want to take it at a section at a time, or rather than saying, reading through it and trying to mark it up, is there some process we want to use to go through and review it?
I think initially, the thought was, since we were going to have a light day, we would just take, just start from the beginning and go through. But I think it'd be a good idea to go through, maybe section by section, and put maybe Section 1 on the next lighter agenda.
Yeah, I think that would help us so we could focus on something rather than...
Yeah. I mean, unless, unless everyone thinks we can get 1 and 2, I mean, there's...
I think going through it, there are some sections that are, you go, yep, that's fine. And some sections where you go, whoa, that was written and refers to things in the 70s. We need to look at that. I think the rest of it, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of, I don't think there's going to be too much crazy gray area. I think it's going to be pretty obvious if a section needs to be looked at. Having been the one who scanned it and half-transcribed it a couple of years ago, there were sections where, yep, this is just here because it's here. And I think a lot of the, the quick word spelling issues that were present have already been fixed, because there were a lot of wrong word, homonym things.
Did you see you have that in Word version?
Yeah, so I gave it to Paul.
Yeah, and I put it on Dropbox, in Dropbox of Word.
Oh, it's in Dropbox, yeah.
Is it? Okay.
So you could make track changes if you wanted to.
Oh, so it is in Dropbox on Word?
Yeah.
Yes.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we go...
It used to be just a PDF that was scanned and rescanned.
Why don't we plan on discussing Section 1 first? And then if, you know, and if we can, if we have time to move forward through Section 2, we can. So, but I don't, you know, I don't want to keep everybody here till midnight.
I don't want to be here till midnight.
Yeah, no, on any, on any day. So if we take it a piece at a time, we can get through it.
All right, so we'll aim for...
So you all have homework?
Thanks a lot, Steve.
My own, maybe this applies to others, but I still would like counsel to weigh in on what the impact or the legal weight of the handbook is.
We did, Paul did ask counsel on that. She, we asked her again today, and she, Paul asked her again today, and she hadn't gotten back yet. She said she was looking at it, so...
Well, there's two things. One is the handbook, and one is the rules and regs.
Right, about you both.
There's both of them. Just one, I think, is more, has been approved by the town. The other one is probably internal. It may have a different impact.
Yeah, so the wording was, let's see, which supersedes it. So, yeah, I don't want to get into it in too detail. But, yeah, we're going to wait to hear back from town counsel, and he did remind her again today, so...
Okay. I would have, in dealing with these amendments, is it possible for us to get them more than a week before the actual town meeting? So if they want to get clarification, I'm not sure what the timing is.
The amendments, you actually, we sent them out about three weeks ago.
But having the hearing on them instead of...
Oh, well, we were supposed to have it two weeks ago, but the Sun Chronicle failed to publish.
It still would have been the last meeting before the town meeting.
No, we would have this one, too.
It would have, it would have been the last.
It would have been two weeks.
But the notice wasn't published in the newspapers.
No, I know, but even then, we would have only had it one meeting before the town meeting. And I'd like to, if it's possible, get it before that. So if you want to get a rewrite, we can get it.
Well, we would have had two meetings. So we would have the last meeting and then this meeting.
I sent the notice to the Sun Chronicle the day after the board voted to send it to you all. I couldn't have, we couldn't have sent it to you any, any sooner than that. But, yeah, understandable to have to do this on one meeting is not, is not fair.
Yeah, no, I agree with that as well.
It's not fair to the FinCom. They're just going to have to do it tomorrow before the meeting. I don't know how they're going to get through all these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's certainly not going to be printed in the, in the warrant.
Trust me, we all have to be there at 6:00, because I have to be there for Capital Improvements at 6:00, for additions to Capital Improvements Committee, too. So I think all of us are showing up early to try and get, bang it out in the hour.
Yeah.
Which happens, so, you know, this will be my second town meeting on, as a rep on, on Capital Improvements Committee. It's happened both times. We go early, because I think all these changes pop up.
Yeah.
You know, and...
Well, all of the boards typically post a meeting an hour before their town meeting, but this is a timely discussion for the FinCom in particular. Usually, the other boards, just, or the, in the Capital Improvement, you know, they might be able to get through within 15 minutes, but...
Right, I know. It's going to be tough.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We explained what happened with the advertisement, and that you weren't hearing it until tonight, so they know there's a pretty quick turnaround on it.
Just point out on the article with the, with the billboards that we changed the setback to 1,000 versus 1,500.
Well, tomorrow morning, I'm, I'm writing up this...
Versus 5.
Versus 5. Well, the article they discussed last night was 1,500.
Yeah.
The printed article is 500. They thought it was 15.
Yeah, that's quite a difference. Yeah, I could, I could see that.
Tomorrow morning, I'll be drafting a staff report, or a report of the planning board in identifying all of the changes tonight. But we'll have to make sure that when FinCom is meeting, that, that here's what, as far as the distances goes, Mike will have to re, you know, have that discussion. We'll have to have the discussion that he heard it as, at a site, at the site that they were proposing, 1,700 feet, but...
His first paragraph was, this will be five football fields away from the closest billboard to a residential property. That was like their, half their selling point. That's what baffled me when he started, you know, I read 500, and then he started, and the circles are showing less. So as long as the FinCom is aware of what they're voting, you know, it's all good.
And Paul, we don't, we don't have to present any of the articles as the planning board tomorrow. FinCom will present all of them.
I don't think we will. No, we do, do we?
Well, you have your report.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
You'll have to report on your decisions tonight. So that's what the report will do, so make sure Steve...
Yeah, but do we have to present the...
Joe's article?
Yeah.
Oh, and present that.
Yeah, I think we do.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to think, like, what, what's, what's our responsibility?
Do we have a volunteer?
You're the chair.
If you need, if you need help...
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be there.
Tomorrow morning, or I can sit with Paul. All we're going to do is, our report is a reflection of what was voted tonight. So if you need help with the language that was moved, I can, whatever I can do to help.
I'll be there, too, tomorrow.
Well, I mean, you want that soon in the morning?
Well, I'll make, when I get the report done, I'll copy you and I send it to Mike and his staff.
Okay. I'm scheduled in town tomorrow, so I'll be here, just to be sure. All right, any further discussion?
Motion to adjourn?
There we go. Our motion is second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.